Good evening, welcome to the Northampton City Council FY 2014 Budget Hearing. This is the second one. This is Thursday, May 30th. I'm City Council President Bill White. I'll be presiding. And we're working through an agenda tonight that features Police Department, Otter's Office, Fire Department, Funding Department, Central Services, Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School. So stay tuned. First up, we're going to hear from the Police Department. The Chief is here and Captain Concus is here as well. Gentlemen... Oh, I've got to do a roll call. We've got to figure out who's here first. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry. Kind of rushing things. Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Counselor Dwight?
Here.
Counselor Barr?
Present.
Counselor Murkens?
Here.
Counselor Forbes?
Here.
Counselor Spector?
Here.
Counselor Tacey and Counselor Freeman Daniels are underway. Now they can be tracked. So, Chief?
Chief.
The budget page is in page 52. Sorry.
Okay. What I do is I do a quick review of FY 13 before you all finish hearing. I'm tracking right now, incorporating some of the contractual changes. You know, my overtime budgets exceeded about $22,000, are fueled by about $20,000. Given some of the changes that happened internally over the past year, I'm trying to, again, probably close up the budget here without having to come to City Council for any financial transfers. And I'll just say that for that. As far as activities, again, this is calendar year 2012. That's what our reporting cycle is. You've already read the budget narrative for FY 13 highlights as part of the submission.
Yeah.
So I'm not going to repeat what you were given, but also some of the things that were removed. In the interest of brevity, I just talked about handling $47,007 calls for service over the calendar year 2012. This is up $3,022 calls, or 7.5% increase. We arrested 1,184 persons. That's up 68 since calendar year 11, a 6% increase in arrests. Investigated 579 motor vehicle collisions over $1,000, more involving personal injury. Since calendar year 11, that's down 99. That's a 15% decrease reflecting our commitment to proactive directed return traffic controls. Consistently over seven years reduced our serious motor vehicle collisions. Because we are so active, it's an activity that patrol officers can not detect unless we see a violation. These are for the rear-facing rear tires on all the cars, and the laptops in the cars, all good things that get us out there and active. In fact, we wrote 6,209 motor vehicle collisions for the calendar year 12. Responded to investigated 3,761 serious offenses. That's up 76, with 2% increase. Responded to investigated 2,208 FBI uniform crime reports. You've been on serious calls. That's up 147 since calendar year 11. That's a 7.1% increase. Responded to 590 domestic violence calls, 240 registered arrest warrant issuance, recorded out of 63 domestic violence stolen on eight quarters. We maintain an 88% protective bureau clearance rate, which is far above the national average of 60,000. We provided our staff and our officers with 12,995 hours of in-service socialized training, affecting the past by a commitment, particularly because we're young department, we're really focused on not only the basic in-service training, but the specialized training and the more in-depth training that we're concerned about. In the narrative, I want to be able to talk about our All-First Aid program, our Critical Incident Team Training and whatnot, for the person at Calwell to do that. We've just got another extension of 25,000. Continue that with the Department of Calwell, but that's all the first area that we've worked at. And we registered 200 sex offenders in our community. For various reasons, we have a very high recap of rate of sex offenders. And that's just not registering, and that's, we have to do audits, do the homicide, so up, see if they're actually living where they say they're living, employed, say they're employed. So it does take a fair amount of time and effort of us. It's clearly an unfunded mandate from the state, as is some of the other training things that have been... Statewide training budget has gone down to less than, just around $2 million. They've increased the mandates of training that the local community sets to providing on, so you don't get the advantage of statewide. It's another... It wears out the budget stuff. Speaking of the budget, that's 2013, unless anybody has any particular questions.
Yeah. Counselor Schwartz and Counselor Tacey.
I might have missed the comparison of domestic violence cases that compared to last year. Did you offer that? I'm curious about that rate.
I actually didn't compare it to last year's. I could do that for you.
Oh, I don't need to take your time.
Actually, one of my supervisors has a different area of responsibility, so they annually provide a report for me, and reports from the Operations Command, or a training report, a protective bureau report. I have domestic violence. Statistics sheet here somewhere, I'm sure of it. Could be a little... Maybe I don't.
That's fine. I like my load by taking some of them out.
It was a modest increase, not a great increase, but I think it was my best calculation, 60, 10 difference. It's a fairly stable number, gentlemen.
Counselor Tacey. I wanted to make sure that what you didn't miss speak or... 300 registered sex offenders in the city.
300 registered sex registrations. The homeless have to register every 30 days, so each of those account for 12. And then we have the population of jail counts, the population of soldier-in-arm counts. And again, some of the things we're working on, well, some communities are moving to figure out how to write ordinances to create no-sex offender zones everywhere. Our sex offender registry persons, Sergeant Man has been working with, and I think you know about, work would happen, other organizations to find sleep room-only housing that would be eligible for the sex offenders to get into, not violate any of their terms and conditions. So they're off the street, but they're in a place that doesn't put them at risk for contact or whatever the rules of contact are for their orders. And it lets us know where they are, because we do have a fair amount of people that are registrers under the South Street Bridge, or, you know, on three meadows or whatever. So we have to track them down, make sure that's their actual house, is our home.
So you had pretty frequent conversations with the VA and things such as that.
Soldier-arm isn't really a problem, because they're under, they have very strict admission rules and behavior rules up there. If anybody, you know, commits substance abuse up there, they stray, they're out of the program.
But they do have a homeless shelter up there also, which is very likely.
They will anymore. Absolutely. And it's a wonderful project.
It's worth my concern.
Very few times do they end up finding themselves downtown, because they have some objectives up there. And they give them certain rules, they check all around the other.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, I'm sorry, Counselor Cony was the next one.
Just a quick question about the grant from the Department of Mental Health. Can you just talk a little bit more about that? I didn't care if you said what that, how much that was for your department.
The total amount is, I mean, we've, I don't have those figures. I was trying to summarize some of the things.
Yeah, I think you say that you get for, you're ready to do training with this money for 12 hours per officer, so that's a substantial amount.
Yep. It's a certification program. We were the first, it's a model for recruit training now, the training to use at the Basic Recruit Academy. We've gotten 18 to 20 of the off, Joe's got the numbers, I'm sure.
We've trained almost all of our patrol officers in what's called a mental health first aid. That's a basic training to deal with people that have emotional or mental health issues up in the field. And then we just put 12 people through a more extensive training. This is a whole week training, 40 hours, of a program called Critical Intervention Team Training. This is, and the whole emphasis behind that is to try to divert people that have mental health or emotional problems, who get in trouble when, they're getting in trouble is because of those issues there. And when possible, when, you know, we don't have a victim issue or whatever, divert them directly to training, rather than get them back into the criminal justice system where we have the ongoing revolving door. So we give them the treatment that they need, and hopefully we will interrupt that cycle and they'll become productive members of our community.
It's, you know, I know the Street Department, which is all the discussion about how will the Police Department does downtown, this is part of what we do live in the scenes. Because these officers are trained and respected by the Community Support Options folks, or Chris's Intervention Team, we can issue a Section 12, they usually have to come up with a evaluation. Now, it's a cell phone call, I've seen this, this is my diagnosis, okay, Section 12, so you can back to the station, you call an ambulance, the ambulance comes, you take them to the hospital, get them on board, and they're off the streets. Even if it's a grief episode, or it's a protracted issue, you know, those are kind of the legally tenable progressive things that we do to try to help the people, priority number one. But also, it's kind of quality of life issues that people have a difficulty with downtown. We're doing all kinds of interventions, and this is one of the biggest ones. And it's, again, a mile across the state. In fact, Sergeant Kerewak runs it, and he was just asked to speak at a regional conference, a local conference, on this very issue and how the program works and et cetera, so.
Good. Thank you.
Counselor LeBard.
Chief, on that 300 registered sex offenders, with the difficulties that we did have in Ward 6 a couple of years ago, for almost 11 months. I know for a fact, because when we've had the Police Department come to Briarwood and have meetings with our residents, it was mentioned several times about ordinances being put in place. I talked with Bill Newman, and he said, "Don't go that way."
Who said ordinances? Not my people.
No, the residents.
Right.
Okay.
You can't, the statute includes, you can't discriminate anything. You're limited to residents.
Right. Exactly. They wanted a distance, like 500 feet away from a school. And Bill Newman told me, he said, "Don't go that way."
Well, it's my recommendation too.
Well, I'm sorry, and I think this is a worthy conversation, but unfortunately, this is a budget hearing, and we too often stray away from budgetary issues and, I think, and actually, I think for a clarification, there's not 300 sex offenders, as I understand. There's 300 registrations, which some are, some of the same person registering multiple times.
Oh, okay.
And so, I'm a little concerned if that number gets out and it's amplified in some other way, so that's to make that distinction. But I think if we, I think this going forward, and also with the Fire Department, and all the other departments that we keep, and I think there's a budgetary tie-in, as the Chief is making, but I think if we're going to talk about policies without a fiduciary link, I think that we're kind of straying from our mission here on that.
I understand what you're saying, but he is talking about a situation which could be involved with his budget, and I just wanted to let him know about his department, working with my residents and...
I appreciate that, yes. And I think, I think that's good, and I think the Chief could probably use any reinforcing. And kudos, and I'm sure he'd resent me cutting off anyone providing kudos, but the fact is that, I bet he'd like even more to get out of here quicker, but, so, I'm just guessing.
Well, he, yeah.
I'll say as long as you want.
He got a lot of kudos from my residents on the police station.
Counselor Freeman Daniels.
Thank you. Chief, at the earlier meeting, you mentioned that this budget would mean that there would be fewer services downtown, is that right?
I haven't got FY 14 yet, and I was still talking to you in fourth grade.
Oh. So we're, let's move on.
Here's your segment.
Would you like me to talk about FY 14 now? That's our...
Why not?
Why not?
Why not?
So FY 14 presented some challenges back in February, when we started talking about the landscape of what the budget looks for for the city, meeting Susan and David, the Mayor. We were given a clear goal, is to level fund. As you know, level funding is not level services, it's, here's the money you got last year, fit everything you need to do inside that cap. You know, I commented in the narrative, you know, the 19 years I've achieved, you know, I went to courses, I talked about three-year, five-year strategic plan, I've never had that option. It's always start with this ceiling of money, and try to fill up the services and with that. So it's frustrating, it's constantly frustrating. But nonetheless, I did what I was told to do. And looking at some of our OM increases, which largely gasoline and information tech on, you have very information computer-rich building that involves maintenance fees and license fees and whatnot, predict now the budget and who those costs, with the gas would be about $85,000 more than we looked at other PS expenses, the contracted bargaining agreements, our place, roster step raises and whatnot. And all that kind of added up to about $170,000 that I had to find under the cap of the level-funded budget. So looking at my budget, one of the few places you can go, I mean, you can save a few bucks and pay for clips and et cetera, et cetera, because our department is 92% personnel, the really only place you can look to cut is bodies, okay? Just by a shirt, kind of complex of things, I had four positions that hadn't been filled that were budgeted. It seemed like the prudent thing to do, given that actually wouldn't be, the city would be laying off bodies, but we'd be defunding these four positions to the value of about $172,000. So that's the strategy that I took. Moving forward to different versions of budgets, with the finance director, the Mayor, other contracts are settled throughout the period of time, so we had other stresses on the budget going forward. And that averaged out to about $169,000. So you will see, even though it was a level-funded budget for question there, that after you worked out various different things, it's just over $100,000 increase to help cover the increased changes in collective bargaining agreements, the step raises, the COLIS, and some other finagling I did with other numbers and looking at things that we were trying to save money on. So we technically met a level-funded budget, but we filled in with some personnel reserves and some shortages of personnel. And of course, as you know, the override put me in a position, hopefully, to be able to restore the funding for those four positions and be able to hire for those four positions. You know, we've been at a static number boost for decades, and our call log keeps going up, and the things that we do in the All-First Aid, that's all time consuming, and it's addition to our normal mission. But to get to your point, Counselor Freeman Daniels, yes, there are several things that, you know, doing more or less issues. And part of it is staffing. With those four positions gone, not available to me to fill, with three long-term injuries that have been over a year, one almost over two years, that haven't been able to come back to me. An officer that was injured that resigned, that injury, he could not come back and do the necessary functions of the Police Department. And interestingly, he didn't put in for disability. He didn't want to burden the city with that. It was very unusual, very generous of him. You know, I've had positions that I'd love to go elsewhere, I've had two people that we terminated, I've had two people that didn't make a training program, I had three people ready to go on the February academy, and a week before, one got called up a reservist, and the other decided he didn't want to do this yet. So it puts me in a tough position, but it also gave me the availability of unfunded positions to try to close the budget gap. And maybe, maybe, hopefully, hopefully, should the override work, I'll be able to fund and replace those positions at a timely manner. We already have two people in the queue for laterals, which is in addition to four. I have six vacancies, four unfunded and two that are funded and I'm trying to fill right now. So what that means, it's reduction of services, so we're evaluating everything. But clearly, one thing is the commitment, and we've talked about this in the downtown business district, you know, the availability of two officer days in the evenings, our bikes are on foot, well, they've got three other cars or four other cars working, the rest of the city. The call load for downtown doesn't match up with the resources that we've assigned. So at least one of those positions is going to be put in a cruise. I can't have an officer going to disturbance alone, or going to a multiple-car accident alone, or dealing with a drunk driver alone, and Florence and Leeds on King Street, sending me on a bike downtown. I just can't do that. It's just bad police management. It's going to be unfortunate unless there's a police presence downtown. And we're also evaluating the calls we respond to, there's a lot of things that we do as a service that we might not be able to. I'd have to make adjustments in my supervisory staffing, because of the shortage of officers, I took her Detective Lieutenant, reassigned her to Patrol, because if I promoted a Sergeant from this last exam, that's another police officer vacancy, and I just can't afford to do that. Plus, we have, what I say tongue-in-cheek, the gun department, that you utilize his family medical leave, everybody's having children, everybody takes use of their 10 or 12 weeks, and that's another gap that's a scheduling nightmare for us. So we're working very short-handed. It's not just, we have X amount of people, and we have that, minus the injuries, minus the shortages, minus the sick act, to the point where we'd be announced about a month ago that unless you have contractually guaranteed signed vacation time coming up in the ship, you could very well leave tonight, turn time on. And that thing would be eligible for being recalled from time on. Not a popular thing, I'd give them around, but it's a reality. We're already in a position that we have, of course, overtime on a fairly everyday basis, just to fill our minimum staff. Which means at the end of a shift, if somebody calls them sick, then somebody's got to stay. Not helpful. Nice to have tired officers up, we don't want crazy police officers walking over. So yeah, there's a lot of things, trimming our training, which is so important, you know, like won't have the ability to take officers from their assigned shifts and send them to training without paying overtime, because it's just going to leave the shift too short. So there's a lot of ripple effects, maybe which I shared with Pam with a request about, you know, the things that, the negative repercussions. But we're strongly committed to be able to deliver services. I talk about this to my supervisors and some of my officers, and I go, "You know what? We'll get through this, we've got to go forward." And they will, and we will. And we'll continue to deliver the services to the state, so.
Counselor Freeman, you.
Just to continue in the van, I started down, so two, it looks as though at least two officers that you're, that we're accustomed to seeing downtown on foot will not be either on foot or on bicycle?
There'll be a day-to-day call depending on setting.
But that regular commitment that has been, that we've been accustomed to in the past year, not as much.
No.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor LeBard.
Chief, I'm talking about also the career incentives, and I know at one point during a budget hearing, you had brought up about when we do the career incentives, then after they're trained in that, then all of a sudden, they give their resignation, as they're leaving, and they either go to the state police force, or they go somewhere else. And we talked about, well, will the city have some form of protection? Like if we're spending money on training, and then all of a sudden they leave?
I'm not sure what your definition of career incentives are.
She's the academy constable, I think. We've talked about it before.
Academy boss, academy.
Yes.
You know, we're not alone here. Framiants have the same difficulty, you know, they're poaching people, offering bonuses. Connecticut's doing the same thing. And it's, it's a different generation, and we've sent people that aren't into training to try to understand the generation. There's not that much to stay in place, so much in the mobile when it comes to geographical, you know, and the ones, I mean, out of the 10 in the past 18 months we lost, and two were terminated, two didn't make the training. One left, two left for smaller departments, I suspect, because we're too busy, I don't know how you, but that's happened. And so much of Green and Pastures, you know, substantially more expensive, or higher paid departments. So you could probably have some kind of contract to force somebody to stay or against it, and well, I don't want that kind of employee. You don't want that kind of officer going anywhere, going down my time, you've got 341 days left before I'm out of this contract. The Chief's of Police Legal Counsel, Jack Collins, we talked about this years ago, about how to force people into services. It's, it sounds maybe fiscally okay, but it's probably just not good management practices in terms of your personnel. And likewise, we're poaching people too, from other departments, so it's, you know, it's a constant changing, population moving to places. It's a different world than that generation of the folks that follow me.
Counselor Carney.
Just one clarification, Chief, too. So the budget shows the four unfunded positions that are in the patrol category, and then three vacancies, so one is a lieutenant and admin position, and then two patrol. So will those vacancies be filled, or are we looking to fill those this year?
There's four officer vacancies for FY 14 that are not funded. I have two additional vacancies that are funded.
Oh, okay. And then, and also the lieutenant position is funded?
Detective lieutenant, Watson is retiring, that's another one of the ten. That promotion was made, that transfer was made into the detective group. The second supervisor works nice in there, just by sheer staffing, moving her over to patrol and utilizing that money to cover some other gaps in the budget. If we are able to hire enough officers, laterals that we get, if we, if the override works and I get those four positions, then that detective sergeant can go back to being detective sergeant. But that's just the magical moving numbers around, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
We're out of time.
I don't know how to do it. Chief, I appreciate your time. I think, you know, given the context in which, or having these budget discussions also in the context of cause and effect playing out with some of the pressures downtown, some pressures in the community, I have made a point emphasizing over and over again when I've been on the news, which apparently has been popular these days for some reason, I can't remember, but I've emphasized the fact that we're one of the safest communities in the state. And that is actually part and parcel due to a police department that, that functions well and effectively, and is well managed, at least. And without, without too many overt incidences that tend to be more extreme headline grabbers, we actually, as a community, the reason that we have a popular downtown is largely the fact that there is a rightful understanding of the level of safety that people have come to expect in the community. The concern, of course, is jeopardizing that sense of loyalty. And, and I know that your department will be committed to that regardless of the circumstances, but the fact is that I think that it's incumbent upon us to fund a program that we come to rely on when it's missing and ignore when it's working. So, thank you, thank you for your time, appreciate it. Captain Concus also appreciates you coming by. Thanks for the very nice card, by the way.
Congratulations.
Good to make my first. Yeah.
Captain Savino senses regrets, he's assistant coach of our team at baseball.
I'm sure he's...
They won 95, they're living on in the tournament, so.
Oh, tell Captain Savino, I'm sure his regrets were genuine, that we missed him.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Otter's Office. It's on page 27 in the budget book.
...............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
That's our budget now, yes.
Council's budget. So the OM budget for the auditor's office is $2,500. It is for archog retention, office supplies and professional development. And for the PS, we have five staff members, myself, the assistant city auditor, chief procurement officer and two accounts, principal account clerks. So if you have any questions that I can answer for you?
Counsel LeRouge?
Again, the procurement officer position, and plus you. I know last time when we had you at the budget hearing, you explained that you can do, and you are certified, to do procurement.
I do not, I'm not certified as a CPO, chief procurement, for the MCPPO, I have not attended those classes. Joe Cook, the chief procurement officer, has.
And do you do training?
We do training to departments on how to put together a contract, what they need to submit, what they need to check, whether the thresholds require bids or advertisements in newspapers. And Joe Cook works closely with departments on that.
Parts of it. And you have the same staff?
I've been there six years, chief procurement officer twenty-four, the assistant city auditor and one principal clerk seventeen years, and we have a new person who's been there two years, another clerk.
I want to thank you and your department for doing such a great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Joyce?
Jean, I'm sorry, Counsel Daisy. I, uh, I just have an interaction with DPW on enterprise funds. Is that something that happens, that weekly, monthly, is that part of your weekly meeting when all the departments get together? Or I'm just curious as to how you interact with the DPW and the board of public works?
I review the funds that they have on a regular basis. We review all the accounts payables. Every invoice that goes through the city is paid, whether it's school, enterprise, any city department. The auditor's office reviews it, make sure there's all the backup documentation. They have grants at the Department of Public Works and I review them. I'm looking at all grants now closely because we're so close to the end of fiscal year, make sure no one's in deficit. If there's a miscoding, we check that out. So I, I, I do work with the DPW and their business manager there.
So you're the one that keeps track of the grants and everything?
Well, each department is responsible for tracking their own grants. I, as auditor, have the overview, so I make sure that, that at the end of the fiscal year, that there isn't a grant that's going to be in deficit, that's going to impact our cash for the next fiscal year.
Okay, that was, ended my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Sorry, Joyce, I mean, we could have kept going longer.
I just, I just wanted to add, I just wanted to thank Joyce and her staff because they, they work very closely with my office, and particularly since we've been having spending advisors in place around, so everything that, all those spending items that have to get reviewed by, by myself, so we work very closely. And they're also, I call them eagle eyes because they're always on the lookout for any kinds of issues or discrepancies and bringing those to my attention. So they, they truly are the sort of the fiscal watchdogs for the city in terms of making sure that we're doing everything correctly and keeping my office informed of any issues. And obviously, they're an important part of the financial team. So I just wanted to add that.
That's good.
Yeah, and I think, as you well know, I probably bother your staff more than anybody in the city. And always professional, always helpful. Thank you very much to all your staff. Thank you.
I will, thank you.
Well, Joyce, appreciate you stopping by. And, and the time that you've invested in your job and doing actually the heralded work that the mayor just described, and, and I appreciate your support. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, Jim.
Next up, we have DC Norris, DC Nichols in here in the house, coming representing the fire department with Paige.
We have the chief is actually supposed to be here.
The chief is on the way?
Just scheduled for. You're so far ahead of schedule.
Oh yeah, we are ahead of schedule. Holy cats. Actually, why don't we call recess since we're not broadcasting live? And did, maybe, you know, wherever you find a better camera angle or something like that, and we can all, we'll just take advantage of the fact that we have, that we're actually running ahead of schedule and that since this is a publicly advertised hearing, it's only fair that we actually start the hearing at the time.
Well, pizza.
There you go. Food for everybody.
Second pizza.
Second pizza. All does a favor.
Aye.
We're coming out of recess, a city council FY2014 budget hearing for the North Hampton City Council. I am council president, Bill Twyke. The remainder of those hearings, we will hear from the fire department, the planning department, central services department, Smith-Fok Aceson and Agricultural High School, coming up at seven-thirty. Right now, available to us to speak is on the fire department, is Chief Duggan is here with DC Norris, DC Nichols also here, presence as well, so we'll do the page. I'm sorry?
Assistant chief.
Assistant chief, I'm sorry, yes. Whoa, whoa. Page fifty-eight in your budget book. Chiefs, or chief, whichever it needs to let it go up. What, what we've been doing is allowing departments the opportunity either to give us a thumbnail if they want, or we can just cut to the questions, whatever your preference is.
Okay, I will do a thumbnail just to sort of orient everyone, and I'll probably multiply to include Deputy Chief Norris and Assistant Chief Nichols as we go through some of it.
Very good.
So as you can see in the budget book, this is a level funded budget, representing roughly $5 million. One thing to certainly focus your attention on is this is the second year that the fire budget includes EMS. So if you remember in years past, we were coming before the council for transfers to populate the EMS budget. Last year, we consolidated those, and this is the second year of that consolidation. So if you look back several years, you'd see a vast difference between our budgets then and now, based on that consolidation. In terms of the personal services budget, we have the same staff members. There was one position that was half-funded last year based on a retirement and is now fully funded this year as the new employee came on. And this is the last year of our SAFER grant. So SAFER is basically a grant that provided us with four firefighters, where it's a three-year grant, fully paid for in year one and two. In the third year, it's municipality's responsibility to pay for that. And the grant SAFER stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. So across the country, these grants are out and they basically pay for three years, or two years, of a fully funded position, including benefits. What we're doing in this year is the city has paid the benefits throughout the first two years. What we have as tailings from those benefits will in essence pay for the third year as we close the grant out. So there is no direct impact to the tax base on that. We're working this as we have three years of grant. Our OM budget is reduced by 17,000. That really slides us toward the PS budget. And we'll go into some of the challenges that creates and some of the changes. So I think our biggest challenge is going to be keeping vehicles running. And I'm going to ask Assistant Chief Nichols to talk about that in a little bit. But if you look at our OM budget, there are accounts that have gone up and down. That's based on two things. One, a trend analysis of what we've currently spent in this year and the previous year. And two, trying to be as frugal as possible to slide some money toward the PS budget based on the steps that have been given in this year and last year with the settlement. So in terms of PS, certainly this year has been a good year. I think I've stood before the council time and time again asking for overtime transfers. If you remember, ten years ago, they were in the order of a quarter million dollars a year. This year, not only will we not require a transfer, but money from both PS, permanent salaries and overtime will subsequently be returned. So the overtime analysis we did, we brought the overtime from about ninety-nine thousand to, neat ringtone, to what our five-year trend was. And if we look at it right now, we're going to be under that five-year trend in this year. That doesn't say that next year it won't go up, it's subject to a lot of drivers such as injuries, sickness, things like that. So that's going to be the good news for this year, and we're going to level fund going into next year on that. Certainly, one of the challenges that we're all aware of is we're entering the third year without a contract or completing the third year without a contract, and we're waiting for an arbitration settlement that will probably be here within the next two months. Certainly, that arbitration settlement is going to impact us all and impact the budget somewhat significantly. So let's see, if you look at the permanent salary line item, that's up $330,000 in rough terms. And that's really based on a number of things. First of all, we had two steps in this year based on the settlement with the union. We also eliminated the fire prevention account as we go into the next year. That was, that account has, the history of it was it was created when we had basically no fire prevention division. And I remember when, when I came to the city, we collected about $1,000 in fees per year. At that point, the decision was made to form a user fee-based account, and that's what the fire prevention account was. Over the last few years, what it's done is basically paid for a majority of the assistant chief's salary and our fire prevention captain's salary. In essence, what we've done is done away with that account, moved those salaries into the regular budget, and I think you'll see that noted. So what I'd like to do is ask Deputy Chief Norris, just come up, give you sort of a specific briefing on EMS, and then ask Assistant Chief Nichols to talk about some of the challenges. And as I said, we're going to have some real challenges with an aging fleet.
Good afternoon, everyone. As the chief mentioned, going forward, looking into next fiscal year, we're not anticipating any huge increase in call volume. Right now, we're kind of trending towards anywhere between forty-six hundred and forty-eight hundred calls per year for the ambulance service. One of the main focuses going into next fiscal year obviously will be with the young department that we have focused on their continual education training, not only to meet the state minimum requirements for their certification level, but also just to give them the ability to enhance their level of care provided to the community. In addition to that, the other focus will be on continuing to upkeep and maintain the equipment that we currently have. There's a number of different types of equipment on the ambulances that require service contracts, whether that's for the cardiac monitors, the automated CPR machines, and also the power stretchers that we acquired through a grant to minimize our injury potential. So those are some of the main factors we'll be monitoring going forward into next fiscal year.
Just briefly on our aging fleet out there. Currently, right now, I have two fire engines that are 1999s that are gaining mileage and engine hours as we speak, and it's taking a lot of parts and labor to keep those on the road. Thankfully, we have a new engine on order, which will, I think, help greatly, and also a new ambulance. But I think the challenge is going to be keeping the two engines going until we get that new one in and then just maintain and being able to repair that. The ambulances get run hard, they get run a lot, and they're fairly new, but road miles get put on them, and it's going to be a challenge, I think, just to keep the maintenance up on those and to ensure that we don't, you know, have any unnecessary repairs and costs to those.
What's that noise? Ironic that.
That's, that's one of those, that's one of those 1999.
Yeah, we timed that and it has a big banner on it, 1999.
But yeah, I think we're anticipating right around the first year getting that new fire engine, which is going to be a huge, huge thing for us. And we'll retire one of those old ones, and one of those 1999s will go into the back line as a reserve. So the challenge, I think, will be getting to January, and, and then from there on out, just trying to maintain the fleet and keep it operational and in good condition where to go.
Counsel Daisy, your question?
Yeah, you're going to retire an old engine?
Correct.
And where will that, where will it go to? Just, yeah, will it burn on the floor?
No. So Engine Five is being retired. It's a 1999. It was of the two 1999s in the worst condition. It's driving by now. So what will happen is that's actually on a municipal auction site right now, subject to being released when the new one is placed in service. One of the things that we did is we bought a new engine through the state bid. And by doing that, typically what we'd do is trade in an engine, take the proceeds and put it toward equipment. In this case, we couldn't put it toward equipment, so we're going to sell it on a municipal auction site, specific to fire apparatus, tends to generate the best value. And then I'll be coming back before the council for a transfer of at least a good portion of those funds to fund equipment on the new vehicle.
So trade-in value is zero?
Trade-in value, if we traded it in through just a normal purchase, would probably get between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. Right now, I have it advertised on this auction site, it's advertised at between eighty and ninety thousand. I don't imagine we're going to get that, but we're going to see.
Craigslist. No, kidding. You said you had, there was some money returning that was being turned back in from PS and overtime. How much is that?
Roughly about two thousand, two hundred thousand. I believe the finance director would probably be, have a better projection than I do. But basically, as we went into fiscal thirteen, we had six openings. And under the SAFER grant, we have a window of six months to hire those people, to number up. We took the full six months and hired them basically in December into January. So with that, we had those salaries that were sitting there, and those salaries have accumulated and will be turned back, as well as we are currently under projection for overtime.
Could I just, I just have to also add that you also have to keep in context that this is a department that does not have a contract for eleven, twelve or thirteen. So there's a whole pent-up amount of PNS that we don't know what that is. We budgeted, tried to budget for some of it, but when that JLMC award comes, that money will need to be absorbed somehow in the fire department budget. So it's a, it's sort of a conundrum because we're, you know, we're making, you know, we're, the SAFER grant is requiring us to maintain the same level of funding while at the same time we're reducing funding in the other public safety department. But then we've also got this other thing looming there that's going to come along. And so even though there's this excess money, trust me, it's most likely spoken for.
That was my point, I would just, it wasn't like a pot of money that we could, yeah.
Yeah, so I wanted to put that in the right contract.
And I'm getting reports on different emails and things such as that, and some communities have refused the SAFER grant. And can you, I know, and we took it for particular reasons, and some have refused it, and then actually their, their mayors have been sued for not accepting it. It's been vetoed back and forth, and there's, it's pretty controversial right now in several cities in Massachusetts. Can you kick that around a minute?
So although some have refused it, the vast majority are accepting it because obviously to apply for it, they have to have approval to apply. I'm aware of two or three that have refused it, one that actually went back subsequently and has tried to then go back and get it. So it is something controversial, and it's controversial relative to the requirement to keep that funding going forward. The actual SAFER grants that are up now are different than the one we had, where it's a smaller period of time, it's a hundred percent funded, but then the concern of the communities is the ability to sustain those positions in the longer term. As we looked at this, certainly it was one a way to add staff as EMS came into prime time in the department, and the hope was that the revenue stream would ultimately support that. We're going to have to see next year, as the grant's gone, what revenues are and what level of staff we have.
Okay, so this is the window, this is where we find out?
This next year will certainly both produce the revenue equation and we will not have any support for, for positions moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Freeman-Danes?
I just wanted to note that to the extent you budgeted, I mean, you really can anticipate this, what the arbitration conclusion is going to be, but did you, so you haven't budgeted for it, you're just keeping?
Right, we've followed the mayor's direction, including steps for next year, but other than that, we haven't included anything because it hasn't been awarded yet. And certainly, when there is an award given, both the mayor and I are legally bound to support that award, whatever it is.
So, there's more question, I guess, from the mayor, that's why I had my hand over.
So.
We've tried to anticipate, we've tried to put some money, you'll note in the budget, we have personnel reserves, and that's sometimes, that's there for collective bargaining judgments and things like that. So we've tried to anticipate some, but obviously, we, you know, we, we have what we believe is reasonable, we don't know what the, what the award will be. There's quite a gulf between the two sides in terms of what that compensation should be. So, you know, when the award comes, we'll then have to assess what the impacts are on, on the city budget, on the fire department budget, on staffing, et cetera, so.
All right. Yeah. Counsel LeBart, then, Counsel Tacey?
Probably, if you could recognize Chris Norris, because I know he worked very closely with one of my residents and I, going through these charts, which I found very difficult to figure out, and I want to thank you for working with the both of us on that. The question is, on runs made by the ambulance where the patient has no insurance, how are those bills accounted for and tracked?
They're tracked on an annual basis, so what will happen with someone who doesn't have any insurance? They're submitted a number of invoices. They have the ability also to request through the department either an abatement or a payment plan, and then after at least six payments go out, it basically just gets written off as an adjustment, as a non-collected bill.
So then we lose the money, correct?
Potentially, yes.
On runs made by the ambulance where insurance pays only a portion of a bill for service, how is that indicated and tracked?
The same way, on those, we get monthly reports from, our third-party billing agency is Coastal Medical Billing.
And who's the third party?
Coastal Medical Billing, they're a third-party billing agency, so they give us monthly reports, and in those monthly reports, there's some different columns. One of them is commitments, which shows the amount of money collected, one of them is adjustments. So on those partial payments that you're referencing?
Yeah.
The money that's not collected will be shown in that adjustment column.
One of the questions, Chris, you had mentioned something to the effect about aging, what do you mean by that?
It's just, it showed different insurance carriers submitted payments at different time intervals. So Health New England, you may see an aging payment in less than 60 days, where Mass Health or Medicare payment, you might actually done 90 days. So that's what we call an aging report, is it ages over the time.
How much money would you say we have lost without having anybody having health insurance to pay, or a payment plan or anything?
I wouldn't be comfortable taking a guess at that right now.
That's not a lot, right?
It's not a lot. When you look at our collection rate after adjustment, it's always between, historically between 92% and 94% after the adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
And let me sort of add to that. First of all, when I do my taxes every year, you get to fill out the HC form that says you have health insurance in Massachusetts. So when we look at our payer mix, most people do have health insurance, and the rates that we set are purposely set to anticipate adjustments, so that we, from private insurers, get the maximum revenue back. One of the things that we just did is we went to what's called a STATNET meeting in Charleston, Mass, and it was focused on fire services, where they did an analysis of different services, sort of what they pay for the third-party billing service, we were one of the lowest, and what the revenue equation is, and we were one of the highest on that. So if you look externally, that says we're doing exceptionally well.
Counsel Tacey?
Yeah, last year, the budget did a little bit different. I had asked EMS versus fire safety, and the answer was, it cost 2.4 million for EMS, and it was 3.6 for fire, for fire suppressors. Is that still about the same?
I guess I'd have to go back through that, and probably the best way to do it is, the way we look at it is EMS actually contributes towards safety on the fire ground. So if you look at prior to us absorbing EMS, the number of people we put on the scene of a structure fire was far lower and subs, below national standards. Since we've gone to full EMS, the number of people we're putting on the fire ground is far more compliant with those standards and much higher, and that's just the way it works out. If you listen to the radio tapes from the December 27th arson fires, you'd find that ambulances are clearing the hospital after doing a cardiac arrest, grabbing a piece of fire apparatus, going to the scene, things like that all contribute. And if we were to restore just the fire service that was there prior to EMS, the staffing level was 10 people on duty. Now we're at 12, so.
I just care, because when I had asked the question last year, you were, you were pretty comfortable with 2.4 and 3.6, it just came right out. So I just, that's why, that's why I was asking, if you still think it's the same, you don't know.
I don't know exactly what it is this year. I'd say if you'd like a financial analysis of it, it should sort of be done by the finance director.
Okay, thank you. Oh, oh, excuse me. Is 80% of all the call volume still EMS?
75 to 80%.
Yeah, 75 to 80%. And of that, and 100% of the EMS call volume, I was gonna, I was gonna ask pretty much the same question, a little bit differently, what would that percentage be of those that do not get paid? And also, what would be the percentage of calls that you get that actually result in a transfer?
So to answer your second question first.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
The number out of all the EMS calls, the number of transports usually trends over the course of a year, around 80% of those calls that we respond to, we transport a patient. And then in terms of, out of those that we transport that don't have insurance, percentage wise, it's minimal. When you look at a payer mix, that the chief mentioned earlier, those with no insurance, it's minimal.
Okay, so the rates that are set, are they set in your department, or are they set by Coastal Medical, or do they just put together invoices?
They're based off of what Medicare sets the rate, and our rates, like other industry standards, are based off of what Medicare allows, so we bring those rates forward that are endorsed by the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel LeBart?
Thank you. One more. Okay, say that a bill that has been sent out, and there's no resolution with it, and it's taking longer than a year, okay, to find out what's happening and why it's not being paid, so how do you track that from the fiscal year to the next fiscal year?
It either continues on the reports as a continued adjustment, or at the end of each fiscal year, they send us an abatement request list. So out of those that aren't paid up, we can go back and review the calls, they have the ability to submit an abatement request or a payment plan, and we can either approve or deny that or make an adjustment to that.
Okay, that's time-consuming.
It is.
Yes. Thank you. I want to thank the chief, fire department, again, for everything that you do in the city to keep everybody safe. And I know you all work very tirelessly when you're out there with fires and whatever, but thank you.
Counsel Tacey?
Yep.
And, um, this is probably not even fair, or, and this is 2005 I'm talking about. In 2005, we had a conflict with Commerce Insurance, and I remember that the goal was to collect unpaid invoices from the Commerce Insurance Company. And the end of, and the end result was, even due to a skillful defense on our part, we were unable to reach a settlement agreement with the Commerce Insurance Company on the hazmat stuff, so we wrote this off as a bad debt because we didn't have any more money for litigation. Are we doing something differently now, because I have not seen that in any budget notes since then? Is there something that, I'm wondering, I'm trying to figure out what happened and why we haven't seen that anymore?
We're still doing hazardous material billing for motor vehicle accidents, especially when there's a fluid release and so forth. That money flows into the hazmat account, replaces speedy dry booms, pads, things like that. If someone's gear gets contaminated, it replaces that, and the billing continues. Insurance companies across the Commonwealth are sort of resisting it, much as Commerce did. We spent $12,500 on that litigation with Commerce, and we decided to pull back, because right now, across the state, many communities are looking at a class action suit. Under Mass General Laws, Section 21E, the state believes that we have the ability to recoup our costs, but it would take a class action suit to move it forward. So we're continuing to invoice and bill as time permits.
So we're not invoicing any differently than we were in 2004, 2005?
No, we certainly have less capacity, so it's taking us more time to do that. I think right now, we're a few months behind in doing that, but we're continuing down that road.
Okay, and, and they're still resisting paying?
Absolutely. Some pay, some don't.
And do we have a particular insurance company in the Commonwealth that pays better than the others, or? I know Commerce is the biggest.
Right. There are some that, we'd have to look back at the records of who pays the best and who doesn't, I don't have that up top.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Thank you. Can you, you said that you were eliminating the, you're not eliminating the charging of fees for a fire safety, you're just not having, not keeping it in its own fund, is that the idea?
Right, so remember, as this started off, the fire department was collecting $1,000 or less per year, and the decision was made to go to a user fund model. At that point, I ran fire prevention for about 18 months, and based on the fees that were put forward through council and approved by the mayor, those fees were put into a revolving account. Subsequently, that allowed us to bring staff on to do fire prevention. So in the last few years, it's paid for a portion of our assistant chief, Dwayne Nichols, and Larry Thierion, our fire prevention captain. As we looked at it in this year, pretty much all that account was doing was trying to sort of keep its head above water with the fiscal crisis, we're sort of on the tail end of hopefully, and it was paying those salaries. So we've moved those salaries into the budget, and the fees that are generated will go to the general fund.
All right, so it's really just a change in accounting?
Yes.
Second question. You just, you mentioned in your, maybe I'm just missing it, but you mentioned in your budget message that you're working on training, but am I reading it wrong that your, your training line item is zero? So are you getting just entirely grants for, for your training, or? At least it's zero in personnel?
Okay, zero in personnel services, so our training line item has gone from.
Is it 20,000?
Yeah, well, on the OM side, it's gone from 28,000 to 20,000, again, with the emphasis of trying to shift toward PS to accommodate that. Some of the training that's put in here in the PS budget was when we'd bring reserve people on and train them to then go on shift. Right now, we just hired six people to fill those vacancies by SAFER, and with that, we're not going into the fiscal year with the need to hire anyone. If you asked me the same question last year, I'd say we need to hire six, or five, or whatever it was at that particular time. But that's another way we've sort of spread the, the ability, the PS budget to absorb where we are.
Okay, you also, Counsel Freeman? Counsel LeBart and Counsel Tacey?
I think I heard you just say something about six new staff, or?
Yeah, we hired six new staff at the end of December, beginning of January, and that was required based on, as we went into the current fiscal year we're in, we were down six openings based on retirements, people that went to other departments, and we had the requirement under the SAFER grant, we have a six-month window.
Yeah.
To bring staff back up.
Okay.
We took all of that six months, and that's how those salaries accumulated, that ultimately will create a positive balance back at the end of the year.
How many retired? Do you know?
Two.
Two, sorry?
Two, two retired, four went to other places.
Counsel Tacey?
Yeah, and for Deputy Chief Norris, our backup ambulance is, is alert, I understand?
No. In our matrix, our first call down is Pioneer Valley Ambulance.
Okay. And is that prior to mutual aid?
That is, that would be mutual aid.
Pioneer Valley Ambulance Service is considered your mutual aid if partner in this?
If all of our ambulances were tied up on calls, and we didn't have personnel staffing in our ambulances, and a call came in that needed a medical response, then we'd call mutual aid. So our first mutual aid call would be Pioneer Valley Ambulance.
And from there, there's a matrix that goes down, for example, East Hampton would be next, and then it rolls through a whole list, especially important when we have major incidents in the city.
Yeah, no. The OEMS, what, what do they, what do they, in your zone plan, what do they require? Do they require you to have a local? What's your requirement for a backup?
Both in our license and in the service zone, they require that matrix we're talking about. So in the event that all of our primary ambulances weren't available, they require every service to have a backup plan, a mutual aid plan.
Yeah.
So ours goes Pioneer Valley Ambulance, then East Hampton, AMR, and it builds out from there. The same thing, we have both mutual aid and intercepts, so we have a same call down list if an intercept is needed.
So you submit a plan every year?
Under our license, yes.
Every year?
The state comes in once a year at a minimum, and they review all of these records, part of which goes mutual aid.
Yeah. So they don't really have criteria that says you have to hire an ambulance how close, just that they have to approve whatever your plan is? They really don't tell you how close an ambulance service would have to be to provide you with backup service?
They require you to have agreements in place with the closest, most appropriate service.
Closest, most appropriate, okay. Thank you.
Counsel LeBart?
No, I'm outside.
You're outside. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate your time and your service as well, and we'll see you around town, time and sign, around the 1999 vehicles, perhaps, I don't know. Best of luck, thank you so much for coming by, appreciate it.
Can I just do a quick closing comment?
Yep.
So we talked a lot about ambulance and finances, I just suggest that the council should also think about some of the other benefits of the ambulance service beyond finances, the, the ability to augment fire protection, the response times that, as we went over them today in a city stat meeting, were 4.6 or 7 minutes in Northampton. That's something that is really unheard of, even in some municipal services. So our people do a really good job, and there's other benefits to just consider beyond the financial equation.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings up another question.
Oh, you all, you just.
You started it.
Spooked your question.
The city stat meeting, that's not the same as your STATNET meeting?
No.
Okay, what was the STATNET meeting held? Where do, where do those held?
Charleston, Mass.
Charleston, Mass.
That's part of our participation STATNET network.
Yeah.
And so we, we had city staff that go to those on a monthly basis.
I actually pulled that up online.
Yeah.
This morning, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good afternoon, good evening. We're damn close to schedule. Next up is the planning department, rectifying is here, it's page 46 in your budget book. We've been giving everyone an opportunity to provide us a little brief narrative, or you can go directly to the questions, or we go behind those curtain number three if you're interested, but your choice, it's up to you.
I'll give you a very brief narrative, take questions. So, you know, you can guess, our budget is overwhelmingly staff, and so we're not really anticipating any changes this year in terms of staff or basic core functions for what we do. In terms of budget cut to deal with the city's budget issues, we cut an engineering account that we have, which is an account, you know, it's one of the sort of like, like all cuts I'm sure you're seeing, it's one of those cuts that we can live with, but it's unfortunate, because what we often do is when we apply for grants for projects, it's often the first dollar that's hardest to get, so often we're doing a few hundred dollars or a couple thousand dollars in terms of feasibility, which may show up later with a hundred thousand or a million dollar grant. And so what is passed out, Counsel Freeman Daniels asked for a list of all the grants which we administer, and so that's what's circulating, but you get a sense if you look at the grants, sort of what are the consequences? Many, most of these grants have some lead time in it. So the VA hospital, for example, the Park and Ride Lot, this is a close to million-dollar project, it's being built by the Commonwealth and designed by the Commonwealth, we had to do a little bit of feasibility work early in the process a long time ago. So, so that's sort of the consequence of the cut. Otherwise, we're sort of be doing generally what we're doing, our office is split into a lot of overlapping functions, but, so we administer grants in major projects, we do about $2 million a year in terms of projects. Some are leveraging other people like the VA hospital, where frankly, for a million-dollar project. We're frankly for a million-dollar project, it wasn't enormous men of our time. And some projects are very hands-on, like bike path extensions. So, it's a whole range of those projects. So, that's sort of one category. Obviously, administering permits for a host of boards, like we administer seventeen different permit applications. We used to, years ago, if you looked at our budget, we would have bragged about the number of permits that we issue. We've sort of in some ways gone the other direction. We see us needing to issue permits in some way saying the system isn't working. So, we're looking at how, so we spend a lot of staff time looking at what are the things which we know, which we approve all, all the time, and make those things allowed by right. And so, we've been cutting back the number of permits that we issue. Now, of course, what happens is we cut back permits like a window replacement on Elm Street, and we don't cut out permits like a subdivision. So, the permits we issue are bigger projects, and so, it doesn't save that much staff time. But if you're the person who wants to replace a window or wants that porch, it's really important. So, look at all those regulations. And then, the other big function, obviously, is long-range planning, which shows up in everything from the transportation plan we've done downtown, to the open space plan, to the sustainable Northampton plan. And so, it's a host of those plans keeping up to date. And then, there's other functions, but they're more support issues. So, for example, you know, we manage a lot of conservation land for the city, and we've really had a big initiative in the last two years since the current mayor sort of cleaned up our backlog of maintenance. And so, we've gone through and looked at hazard trees and trash piles and those kinds of things. But that's more supporting everything else. So, I can do as much details as you want, but that's the quick overview.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Counsel Adams, do you have a hand up?
Not yet.
He is, okay. Counsel Casey.
I'll take the brownfields for two-hundred, Wayne. Is the Pleasant Street due diligence? Can you explain that to me for a minute?
Sure, so there's two, three aspects to this project. One is, the city's been looking for a while at, is it our interest to take over a portion of Pleasant Street? The state layout. When state layout, it is a highway, and so, there's no room for cars, can't park there. You know, and so, cars speed up very quickly to downtown. And so, the city taking over allows us to narrow Pleasant Street, allows us to do on-street parking. Given the environmental history of the site, we want to make sure that we're not getting a huge liability for the city. So, the biggest part of this is just looking at Pleasant Street and making sure we don't open up a liability. The second part, which is smaller, but may, may or may not still be an opportunity for the city, the city, we believe, it's cladded title, owns a very small parcel of land on the corner of Pleasant Street and Wright Avenue, which we, it was the Northampton Dyke Company. And when the Northampton Dyke Company went bankrupt, we believe it came to the city. Again, we need more deed research. But that's a site that could be a park, it could be a slant economic development opportunity. But again, we need to know if it's a clean site. And then, the final site, the one that's the biggest challenge is more an economic development standpoint, is the old stop service station with San Francisco Journey, which used to cross Pleasant Street. Is trying to figure out what their issues are, if we can do anything to bring that closer so that, you know, we can get more development of the site.
And there was, and across, there was also, there was savings coal, oil, and lubricant.
Right, right. The issue is groundwater movement, as far as we can tell, in that area is from west to east. So, the coal site, if it's contaminated, doesn't affect any city property. And that property's been on the market, and they've done due diligence, they hired a firm out of Springfield. And so, we weren't that concerned about that. The, the stop service station, because it's on the west side of the street, if there's movement of oil, it's across the street, which we may someday own. So, that's why we're more concerned.
And we don't have any liability at all in this, our agreement with this park and ride at the VA for anything on that front? I mean, that's been a, that's been a parking lot for asbestos and lead and things over the years. And I know they had huge trouble with their landfill just three or four hundred feet away.
We have no liability for the parking lot itself, it's owned by the VA. The VA was happy to take care of maintenance responsibilities. The only new liability to get, which the city picked up, is the signal in front of the VA, used to be a VA-owned signal.
Right.
As part of this deal, it comes to the city, and obviously, it's a maintenance responsibility, that's the only thing.
So, it's, the project you said is state-funded?
Probably, well, state and federal, exactly.
State and federal funded?
Eighty-five percent federal.
Okay, so, we don't have anything at all to do with the construction of that lot?
A little bit of staff time to make sure we're getting what we've all agreed to do. But otherwise, oh, again, the signal could be covered with all of it.
Yeah, and if they dig a hole and they dig into something that's awful, it's nothing to do with us?
That's right. The only piece that is city property is, again, the road bed, and we're also putting up a ramp onto the bike path.
Yeah.
And so, that's obviously back on city property. But nothing where the lot is, nothing to be a property.
Yeah, okay. I have some longtime residents of Leeds that have asked me to ask that question. Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
Director Fiden, how is it that some CPA funds are used to pay for salaries?
So, it's eligible cost, CPA money is voted for. It's the idea for CPA is basically self-supported, for the staff who's working on CPA not to be coming out of general fund. So, that the time, we have two people in my office who spend some time on it, and in essence, their staff time is a hundred percent covered by CPA, the portion of staff time on the project.
There is some, what's the percentage of CPA funds that could go for administrative use in your office?
I know we're significantly below what's allowed, I don't remember what the percentage is.
Five percent.
It's five percent.
Five percent.
Director Fiden, thank you very much for this, this, it looks like an Excel spreadsheet, is that right?
Sorry to pummel.
Yeah, no, well, it had to fit on the page. I, this is, I mean, this is just a back-of-the-envelope calculation, but it looks as though from the last, from last year and this year, you're administering roughly over, over two-point-two million dollars in state and federal grants.
That's right.
That, that, those are grants that the city, the city is awarded for different projects that, that your office does with, with other partners, of course. So, your budget of, of a quarter million dollars is, I think, an excellent investment. It's tremendous value, considering that, and not even, and not, we're not even talking about CPA funds, which are raised locally, but the amount of dollars that, that your office brings in from state and federal is commendable. And it pays for a lot of the improvements that we, that we have come to really appreciate in this city and, and can't get because of our tight budget. And, you know, sometimes, we, we do take a lot of heat for, for approving these sorts of grants because it's assumed that we could just use that money for operating costs and so on and so forth. And, you know, number one, we can't, and number two, I'm glad that we can deflect it from you and your office so that you can continue to, to reach for these, these, these state and federal funds to enhance the quality of our life here in Northampton, thank you.
Counsel Casey and then Counsel LeBarge.
It's too bad that this isn't live streaming, because I wanted you to explain to us here, but I really want to just explain to the public the importance of the GIS recorded in your, in your office, because that's another loaded question I get constantly.
Well, this, this is being recorded, so it will be, the NCTV will be broadcasting.
Yes.
They don't get to experience it in the moment, I suppose, which I don't think we're hearing too many people complain about.
But I find it, I, I find it extremely important, the position, so.
So, thank you for that. The, you know, position does a lot of different things, I'm just sort of big-picture tasks to make sure it's clear what it is. But the core thing which supports a lot of departments is the assessors' maps and zoning maps, where, you know, obviously, there's change every year, so there's a fair amount of time spent in keeping those up to date. The fees that we charge for surveys that come in probably cover that portion of the time that city spends. Then, there's a lot of work that we do supporting other departments. In essence, you know, sort of a department wants mapping services, and we provide those pieces. All those, those grants that Counsel Freeman Daniels talked about, most of those grants require some analysis to get to them. You've all heard me come talk to you before about which projects do we make money, in terms of the housing world? Which projects do we make money, which projects do we lose money? That's the analysis that lets us do that and lets us figure out the way those resources.
And the importance of that position to the DPW.
That's right, right. Again, because we're doing that, because they have, they have a GIS person as well, but they're doing more applied work, we're doing the, the core base data, which that, that is.
And therefore, the enterprise fund kicks in. Thank you.
Counsel LeBarge.
Yes, how long has that employee been in your office? He's been there as long as I've been, Counsel, quite a long time.
I remember everything I ever done here, but I lose all track of time. You know, a dozen years is my guess, but, you know.
And I did know that part of his position, which has not just happened, but he has been doing work for the Board of Public Works for a long period of time. And I want to thank you, Wayne, as a director, and your employees. I mean, you have worked so hard of getting and going after grants to make what has been done here in our city of Northampton changes, so thank you and you're staying.
Any other questions? Just to follow up on the point that Counsel Freeman Daniels is making, just to reemphasize the fact that as the state and federal government continue to advocate their commitment to subsidizing and funding municipalities, we are left to departments aggressively seeking, and we've talked to a number of departments, seeking and acquiring and getting the grants, which is actually state and federal money that may have come at some point in the form of a tax commitment from the, a revenue commitment from the communities. And now, we're in a position where we actually literally have to create positions to solicit these, locate them, find, identify the best ones, the ones that create the greatest virtues. And again, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment applied towards two-and-quarter million annual return is pretty damn good. And, and in fact, actually, your department is, is, is better off than most departments in many respects in the, in the amount of revenue that you generate for the programs that you generate, and it's critical. And I, and I, and I keep thinking that, based on at least public testimony, the disconnect that Counsel Casey was referring to, there's an enormous disconnect as to what, what this funding means. See, we've been accused of being frivolous with money as opposed to, you know, as we're talking about an override, or we're talking about losing positions in the schools, and then make the corollary between the development of bike paths and preservation of conservation land and open space, saying, why are we investing in that when we're not investing in our schools? The fact is, is that this is, the cards have been dealt by the state and the federal government. They put in mandates, they also require us to solicit our funds from them in the form of grants. It's very difficult to budget according to grants, and it's, it's our continual frustration to try and remind people that this money devoted to bike paths, riverfront parks, things of that nature, are actually use it or lose it. If we don't get that money, it's not like we can reapportion it for something else. So, you're just actually a convenient foil right here for me to rant about that, so I appreciate you just sitting there patiently and listening and nodding. But it's, it's an important point that we have to make over and over again. The extent of the state and federal government's commitment to us, as it diminishes, we are left with trying to at least get some commitment from them. Our investment in our state and federal taxes gets back here, reinvested in the community and real life. So, thank you for your work towards that, I appreciate it. Counsel Fiden?
Just a quick note, that the city has a number of multi-member commissions and boards, and those committees, commissions would really have a hard time functioning without the expert staff that your office provides, Planning Board, Conservation Commission. I mean, most of those folks, you know, really do rely on that assistance in terms of understanding what Mass General laws are and other regulations. And so, people should, should know that the Planning Board staff are not only here during the day, but often well into the evening hours or early morning hours in some Planning Board meetings, so thank you.
I should add, actually, let's go through items with you, besides supporting boards and the funding of boards, part of it we look at is our task to sort of do risk management for the city. So that, you know, some boards really need that, you know, boards, particularly for permits, are very likely to have things appealed. And so, that risk management to reduce our exposure is really important. You don't see that as a savings, but hopefully, it gets sued less because of that.
I'm afraid I'm dug yet. Counsel LeBarge and then Counsel Casey.
Wayne, uh-huh, thank you. On your 2014 planned activities, which I'm very happy to see, about the Connecticut River, Greenway Riverfront Park, can you talk about that?
Sure.
What's the activity there?
And you're all invited tomorrow at three o'clock for a big ceremony.
I know, I got it written down.
So, tomorrow, we'll be taking title to this land. It's a generous donation from Lane Construction. And we have four-hundred thousand dollars from one of the state grants, a hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars, that's funded, that's not on this list, actually, I think it may be buried in a room, that was fundraised by Northampton Community Rowing, a hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars from CPA. And so, we'll be developing a park over the next six months that's there. Mass West is going to be the contractor for the project. And it will be, you know, earth movement is expensive, I never understand it. I'm sure some of you would understand more than I do, but it's, you know, it's shaping the site to the right site. We're not building a boathouse, but the site will be ready so that if Northampton Youth Community Rowing is ready to build a boathouse, they can. We'll build a parking area, deal with wetlands mitigation, do a trail down to the water, and do a ramp down to the water, a little nature interpretation. So, it becomes a really, a park that's ready for people to use for car topple boats, for nature walks. May or may not have a boathouse later, that's more Northampton.
The boathouse in general, because we hear so much about the boathouse, how is that going to be done by the rowing or fundraising?
Right, they, they have a lease for the boathouse. They have a ninety-nine-year lease, and it's really up to them. Now, this goes back to watching the grants.
Yeah.
If we find a grant tomorrow for two million dollars, we may come back to council and say, would you accept this grant, and we could change the deal. But at this point, it's a private sector problem.
Thank you.
Counsel Casey.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm awful glad that my email doesn't have a ringtone, because many emails I get from you are at eleven-thirty at night or five in the morning, so thank you.
Just one last thing, where do you meet for the ceremony?
So, at the Lane Construction site, Damon Road, right when you go into the interstate, turn left, pass River Run, and then the fence has always been closed, will be open for tomorrow. Great, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne, thank you very much. We're actually, still have a schedule, so we did Pomerance is up next, but we won't, we're gonna hold off because he's scheduled for, for seven o'clock. And we want to stay according to...
Oh, he's meeting law.
Let's go.
So, actually, we have another break until seven, so if counselors wish to partake in that, just please be back before seven promptly. Thank you. Okay, we're back. My bad, I said seven promptly, and then I'm gonna let him on the show if not fair. Welcome back, we're on recess, the City Council Budget Hearings for Thursday, May thirtieth. This is for the FY 2014 Budget Hearing, it's I'm City Council President Phil Dwight. Next up on the calendar here is Central Services Department, page forty-eight. And David Pomerance is here, to sing to the choir. Thank you for coming, David. Now, what we've been doing is giving the department heads the opportunity to either present a thumbnail or to just open up the questions, whatever, what's your druthers?
All right, well, let me, let me just, first of all, good to see everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to stop by, meeting the mayor.
Who is it?
Just a couple of sort of quick facts, and then I want to talk about some personnel notes and some O and M things on the both parking maintenance and the central services side. With the recent addition of the thirty-thousand-square-foot new police station, which is really a gem in the, in the city's facilities, infrastructure right now, and the fifty-thousand-square-foot two-level parking deck that's going to be coming online very soon, I thought it'd be interesting to add up, how many square feet at this point does the city actually take care of and is responsible for in city facilities? And I'm adding the schools to this. We're just shy of a million square feet, with about ten staff on the city side and maybe forty staff on the school side. And I ran some numbers, looking at comparisons for facilities, directors, associations, as far as number of employees taking care of square footage. And it's pretty amazing that, like so many other things, you know, we could always use more, but for the number of staff that we have taking care of our facilities, what our budget numbers are, we've got some amazing-looking and well-preserved facilities and buildings throughout the city. So, I was even surprised when it came up with the, almost a million-square-foot number. Couple of notes on the personnel side, on the central services budget. Last year, we added one-and-a-half new custodians to take care of second-shift services with the new police station. the new police station. That was the first year we had done that, obviously, and that is continuing. Having those additional one and a half people provides us the sort of cushion and the extra hands and energy to keep that 24/7 facility clean, stocked, and maintained. As a nod to Chief Sankowitz and his command staff, I have to say that since the PD moved in, stellar job on internal maintenance by their staff, and it definitely helps us do our job, knowing that all their officers and command staff are doing as well a job as they are. Also, last year, Chris Mason, the Energy and Sustainability Officer, was working 30 hours a week. We bumped him to 35 hours a week. That will continue again this fiscal year. We signed a memorandum of understanding with the Northampton Housing Authority, and Chris is providing up to, excuse me, up to five hours a week in technical support to NHA, helping them develop energy conservation and renewable technology projects. And John Height is more than happy to have Chris's expertise and those five hours a week. So, he's built into the budget for an additional five hours this year, as was last year. You may see city staff walking around in brand-new uniforms. The city employees are members of the NAME Union, DPW Union, and we have just gone to a new employee uniform policy program. We're waiting on T-shirts for the summer months, but across the board, the crew likes them. It's been a real morale booster. It definitely increases the safety factor as far as who these people are, walking in and out of buildings on a daily basis, and it preserves their own personal clothing from getting ripped, shredded, torn, having things spilled on it. So, so far, at least on the city side, the crew really likes it. Come July 1, we're going to expand the uniform program to include the mail courier, the city electrician, the HVAC tech, and the parking maintenance staff. So, a real plus, and I thank Susan and the mayor for funding that and making that a reality, and it really goes a far distance to help the crews and the work that they do in the city. Just as a note, you may see in the budget, as a reminder, we have central services staff, specifically the facilities project coordinator, the city electrician, the HVAC tech, and the mail courier, who are all funded under this sort of a multi-department contribution system between Smithville, the DPW, Northampton Public Schools, and the city. That's a longstanding relationship. I inherited that when I got here six years ago, and the numbers get tweaked here and there depending on bigger picture of who's working where, but, you know, the city electrician and the HVAC tech do spend a fair amount of time, both at MPS and the DPW. I think Jim Maillot still likes to go down to that wastewater treatment plant and fix those pumps, which is why we got them in uniforms. Couple of comments on the O and M, the operations and maintenance side, on the utilities side of things. We have finished construction with Con Edison on the $6.5 million Energy Performance Contract. We are into what's called measurement and verification, where they are now responsible for coming back and measuring to see if, in fact, we are meeting the estimates that they came up with for energy savings. And sort of going from general to specific, on a general level, across the board for all energy units, so electricity, natural gas, those are our big users, we are seeing reductions, all city facilities and schools and DPW facilities, 25-plus percent as a result of the technical, the technology rather, and the hardware measures that were introduced. Chris Mason is now developing a program, we had a meeting with the mayor about this, to look at that sort of third leg of the stool as far as how we save more energy, and that is behavior modifications. There's a whole program that Chris is developing to go amongst departments across the city and in the schools to start talking about what else can we do, whether it's turning off the computers before you leave, to changing how we deal with requests for turning on the AC systems or reducing the air damper systems in buildings. Just to let people understand, there are more things we can do. But 25% average across the board is what we're looking at as savings since we implemented the project just about a year and a half ago. Now, what that means is, we're saving because of the Con Ed project, we're also saving, and this is certainly news to Susan, we're saving money because we also have great energy contracts. Because of natural gas prices, we are locked into some great pricing right now on natural gas. We're going out right now, bids are due next week for new electricity contracts for our streetlights, pump stations, and some of our bigger buildings, and the initial numbers we've gotten back, while we're not going to see the .589 cents per kilowatt hour that we saw in the last contract for that swath of accounts, we're still seeing some really good numbers and some competition amongst the seven suppliers that in fact are giving us numbers. The other thing to keep in mind is, between natural gas and electricity, we used to, the city used to rely heavily on oil. With the disposition of the Florence Grammar School pretty much assured now, that was the last big oil consumer on the city side. No schools have been burning oil for a number of years, with the exception of a couple of small greenhouses at Smithville, there are no facilities in the city now using oil. So, that helps us as far as reduce supply-demand, as well as lower cost for natural gas versus oil. And in fact, over the next three weeks, we'll be taking out a dozen above-ground tanks in the buildings and probably 5,000 to 3,000 gallon underground storage tanks over the next three weeks or so. So, you'll see that happening around the city. Couple of other notes, trash hauling. Obviously, the landfill is closed. For years, we've worked with a local hauler for taking out trash from the city buildings at reduced cost and recycling for free, and the schools were done at no cost. That was a long-term arrangement between the local hauler and the city. Ned Huntley and I did a bid proposal, and we opened bids the end of last week for trash hauling services through the schools and the city buildings. Ned is currently putting all that in a spreadsheet. We have five bidders submit proposals, so that's always healthy as far as competition. And Ned and I will be meeting next week to talk about structuring a contract based on who the apparent low bidder was. But that's going to take effect July 1. We currently have a contract with that local hauler for the city buildings, and they're still honoring the schools. But come July 1, it's a different ballgame as far as the schools having to pay as well because of the situation at the landfill. Briefly, you've heard me mention in the past about contracted inspection services. This is the array of both preventative maintenance and code-related inspections and exams that we need to do throughout the city on an annual basis. Everything from elevators to sprinkler systems, to fire extinguishers, to generators. Some are required by code to be done. That gets built into the budget every year, and those are contracts that we enter into various vendors and suppliers on an annual basis. That will continue, as far as elevators are concerned, obviously, we all know about the state's, I guess I would call it tardiness, in doing their annual inspections, even though you may see an elevator with an expired certificate. Bridge Street is out of compliance right now theoretically because their certificate was up in March. I have about seven buildings that will come due June 13th, when they go out of compliance. As long as the elevator maintenance company who does our service work and emergency repairs has filed all the paperwork to request that inspection from the state, we're covered. So, it doesn't mean it's an unsafe elevator, it doesn't mean the state's going to come in and shut us down. It's just the fact that, you know, they were supposed to put more money into this program to basically add more inspectors in Western Mass, and it never happened. So, we're relying on a limited staff to come out and do inspections when they can.
Counselor? But you did not indicate that they are unsafe either?
No, no. All the preventative maintenance exams, which we do on a quarterly basis, four times a year, they're up to date. And any repairs we need to make are up to date. It's just the annual inspection from the state. One other note I just want to make under O and M, operations and maintenance, obviously the central services staff on the city side and the school side, daily you'll see them in buildings doing the small repairs, the, you know, little maintenance upgrades here and there, things you typically expect maintenance staff to take care of. I have the pleasure, really, and it is a luxury, but the pleasure of having a maintenance staff on both the city and the school side, most of whom now carry construction supervisor's licenses. And what that means for us and the city is that we can handle more and more large projects. We do the work in-house, take care of all the permitting and inspections on our own, bring in outside vendors as we need them, but we are acting as our general contractors. We're not paying prevailing wages, this is done during normal work hours, and it allows us to basically save money and put that money into additional projects. If you've been in the HR offices over Memorial lately, you've seen the place is pretty much turned upside down, we're dividing that space in half, new offices, and HR will be on the parking lot side, and Veterans is going to occupy the park side, and we should be done with that in a couple of weeks. But, you know, really a tip of the hat to the maintenance staff, all licensed construction supervisors, which really makes Louis Hasbrook happy. The, and just one other note under O and M, and I just want to mention parking for a second. We initiated a centralized office supply purchasing program, a centralized copier, installation and maintenance program, both about four years ago. We've just upgraded all the copiers in the city to new five-year leases, no maintenance charges for the first three years on those, and so the machines are, they're faster, they're smarter, they do more tricks. The next step is going to be to try to reduce the number of printers in offices because everything can be printed, scanned, emailed, et cetera, to and from these copiers right now. Centralized office supply, and I mentioned custodial program. We coordinate both the schools and the city side purchases on an annual basis. We order everything upfront over the summer, and then as departments request things, we basically distribute them through our storeroom across the city on an annual basis, saving a lot of money. So, those are two big programs that have definitely proven their worth in the four-plus years since we initiated them. Just briefly on capital, this summer, we'll be replacing part of the roof at the Academy of Music. We're going to, using CPA money, we're going to be doing the trim over and stucco restoration work on City Hall. It's an interesting exercise right now, the architect and engineer we're working with, they're trying to determine what the history is of the stucco on the building. It looks like it was definitely replaced in the 20s, and we're trying to verify the colors to be as historically true as we can. We did some roof work on the building a couple of weeks ago, you saw the lifts outside the building. We'll be doing an ADA access project in Muni later this summer, early fall, so we'll have ADA access in the council chambers, and we'll be doing a campus-wide security system in these three buildings. Too many keys floating around the city, and we're going to be going to a FOB system, similar to what we use in the schools and what is used at the PD. Just a couple of notes on parking maintenance. It was about a year ago that central services took over parking maintenance, so that include, at that point included the garage, all the lots, and the meters, the pay stations. And in the year that we've taken it over, I think we've made great strides in sort of fostering that coordination, better coordination and communication certainly, between us, parking, and DPW as far as sharing resources. Keep in mind that the parking maintenance staff, besides taking care of the lots and the meters and collecting all the money three times a week, is also the point group that takes care of those requests we get for closing off lots, for special events that people want to do in the city. There's a pedal poker run at the Maplewood Shops in October, there's a blood drive on United Bank's property in beginning of June, and they need seven spaces. So, things like that, that parking does, besides all the maintenance work. I mentioned earlier that we're just bringing on the new multi-level parking deck next to the PD. We've got some punch list items left that the contractor needs to address in that, and I've been working with the mayor and the chief of police as far as, and the TPC, as far as looking at when we're going to open it up and what we'll do as far as charging for those 54 spaces. Again, member court employees and HCOG have that lower level between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, but it's open after that, and we're working on getting that open to the public. And again, on the capital side for parking maintenance, bids are due on the 13th. We're doing an extensive restoration and upgrade project on the garage, extensive work dealing with concrete and epoxy repairs, rebuilding stair systems, new rails, metal pans for risers and treads, painting work, and that'll all start probably after July 4th and run through mid-September. So, there'll be times over the summer where we're going to segregate and close off certain sections of the garage, so it'll be a dance, but these contractors do this, so they know what the owner expects and they want to satisfy the owner's needs. But there's, you know, there's a lot of deferred maintenance in that building, and I've been working with a consultant on basically coming up with a four-year maintenance program. The first year is going to be the really big push with the big items, the epoxy work, expansion joints, the columns, concrete work on the stairs, metal fabrication, things like that. And also, later on, we'll look at some elevator upgrades, et cetera, as we go forward. That's about it. Oh, one other thing on parking. We are going to be, once we get this project moving in the garage, we're going to be working to issue an RFP for a group to look at the, everything from sort of parking philosophy, parking policy, and technology in the city. The system in the garage is outdated, it was state-of-the-art when it was put in. The green pay-to-park machines, they're older, there are other systems and styles out there now. One thing we want to look at is debit cards for meters. We had a brief discussion about this at the last TPC meeting, and that will be some of the things we want to look like. So, policy, philosophy, zones, schedules, as well as the technology as we start moving forward. But I want to get the garage project off the ground, and then we'll start shifting and looking at the technology. That's about it. Questions?
Questions, Counselor Tacey and Counselor LaVard? The maintenance personnel in the police station, that was anticipated, is that correct?
Correct.
You had that all figured, you had that figured in. And the 25% reduction in energy since the completion of the ESCO, is that, they haven't come out with a report yet as to what we've saved, is that correct?
Correct. They've had, we've been working with them, they've come out with a draft report that looks at units saved. We're taking those reports and converting them into numbers. They're guaranteeing us what we should be saving, and now we're going back and looking at building by building, systems by systems in each building, to see where are we short, and working with them to say why. Is it technology? Is it the software for the energy management system? Is it staff leaving the windows open or cranking up the heat beyond what we have it set for through the computer system?
Okay. And do you have crossover in your personnel, I mean, you have it listed here as parking, central services, and then you have central services parking maintenance. Do they back and forth?
Not officially. We will, I will.
I know it's impossible not to, to some degree.
For example, if central services and maintenance staff needs equipment for something, we'll pull it from parking. If the parking staff needs manpower for assistance with something, we'll shift the maintenance staff over to do that. But also, let me expand that and say, we do that with the DPW and they do that with us. So, for example, if we need some assistance with the tree truck or the bucket truck, we'll call the DPW. First, if they need something in their admin building that is sort of beyond what would be expected the HVAC tech or the electrician would do, maintenance staff will go up and help them with that. So, there is, it's not an official relationship, but, you know, we certainly share resources as much as we can.
And I would hope that you felt you had that flexibility to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay. What was the name of the firm? I had given you a report that was put together many years ago for a parking maintenance program for the garage. Is that using the same firm for this report or this plan?
It's not ringing a bell. I've never seen a report. If there was, if there is in the records, when I took over all the files, I never found anything. found anything.
Okay. I have a copy of that.
Of that nature.
And, you know, I just kind of wondered if it was the same firm, and I don't know. We paid $5,000 for a report, had a five-year plan, it had year one, year two, year three, year four, year five. I know it's obsolete now, Christ, I think it's eight years old.
Right. Different priorities.
Yeah. So, so we have a new, a whole new plan coming, so it's not the same plan?
Correct.
Okay. And we, we were touching on another department last night, which was the Council on Aging. And the director indicated to us, I looked at the rental, it was pretty anemic, I thought. It was not, it was pretty low, the $2,650 bucks or something. And she had mentioned it was the HVAC and she could not, and I asked what might be that would be turning people away, and she said because she couldn't provide, guarantee them heat or air conditioning. And I know that when it was first built, the geothermal wells, of course they have pumps and then they have manifolds, and the manifolds were, I think they were substandard because they had developed hairline cracks, they sucked air.
Correct.
And the system was not working correctly. I remember that very well.
Right.
But they've been replaced, and apparently now they're not, for some reason or another, they're not functioning.
We-
And she indicated that to us last night, that's why I was dumbfounded.
Yeah. We get schedules from the COA of when they've got events in the different rooms, so for example, the Hampshire Coral Society, or they're renting the space out for a workshop from an outside vendor. So we set, whether it's cooling or heating, my staff will set, based on the outside weather, what we need for schedules. Now, if it's a cooling situation, let's say the event's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, we're going to basically put the cooling on at probably 5:00 o'clock and start ramping it down at 8:00 o'clock. So that could be some of the, so the up and down that they're sensing. I will ask Jason if he gets any complaints from COA staff, but normally he's going to tell me if we've got an issue with those systems. And to answer the other part about the heat pumps and what happened, the manufacturer and the contractor came in, it wasn't, it was a product liability issue, it was a manufacturing defect, and all, and a lot of those parts, the compressors were replaced at no cost to the city. And we run, the system runs fine, so there could be some tweaks, or there could be parts on the shoulder period where, you know, the AC is ramping up, where it's coming down. I'll have to call Patty and ask her, and I will also ask Jason.
Yeah, okay. But she indicated that she couldn't guarantee, and she said it would just turn people away.
Yeah.
So I don't know. That's why I'm asking, and I would really like-
Definitely look into it.
It's too nice a facility to let go unused.
Right.
I really thought, when I saw the low number for the rental, I just couldn't, I couldn't believe it. $2,600 bucks for that facility for a year.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Counsel LeBarre, do you have a question?
Thank you. David, I want to thank you and your employees. I really like the direction that you're going into of running Central Services. I like the idea of the employees being hired who are licensed contractors, which is saving money for the city to go on the outside. So I want to thank you and all your employees.
Thank you.
Counsel from the day.
I just have a question about, so trash removal, that's $18,000, that's what you budgeted?
That's city buildings, yes.
And then the school will be, the school will be-
Schools, we're estimating about $30,000.
And that won't be, that's not here in the budget, that's going to come in, that's going to be on the school side?
That's on NPD, yes.
Okay. $500 for groundskeeping supplies? What grounds do Central Services deal with? I mean, that's not a lot of-
Flower beds.
Oh, is that what, it is a lot of-
Small stuff. We don't, we don't, we mainly stay at, actually, take care of all the grounds, so it could be everything from a dilt for a mower to some fertilizer or grass seed. Not a lot of lawns and gardens in the downtown buildings.
Yeah, I want to talk to you about that. So, then the other thing is the bid assessment, $35,000, that's how it comes out of parking, is that right?
Yes.
That's for the MOU that was, that the city signed back in-
That's correct.
A couple of years ago.
And that's, that's an annual arrangement with a fee that goes to that, yep. And it gets run through parking maintenance.
Right. And then parking has, is this right, $15,000 for telephone and $7,000 for Central Services telephone, is that right? Because that's just, I mean, it's just like, this, this year I just started to look at the telephone bills for, for different departments, it's like, I'm just trying to figure them out, I guess. But maybe that's a question for the-
The telephone line item is the Connect CTI that the parking division uses to do the, you know, when there's snow and the lots are closed. So that's, that's the, that's the bulk of that 15.
So that, that 15, that's the reverse 911 type?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions?
If the, if the fact that Uso will no longer be doing the gratis school waste management and the fact, can you give us an estimate, or maybe it's inappropriate based on the bids that you see, what's the worst-case scenario and the best-case scenario? Do you have a sense of that?
The way that, the way that RFP was written, there were numerous lines in spreadsheets that each potential bidder had to fill out based on the size of a dumpster and a recycling bin by building. And all I can see is that spreadsheet at this point, and I can't give you the totals.
Is it scary, is what I'm actually trying to get to?
No, I don't think so.
You budget, that's, that budget, you said, is about $30,000?
Last fall, we asked some vendors to, we said, look, here's, here's what we're currently generating by school for both trash and recycling. Give us a budget number for what it would cost if all of a sudden we needed for you to come in and start hauling it out. And it was averaging around $30,000.
So is that, okay.
And again, that's going to be on the MPS side.
Right. I guess I'm, then what's the trash removal on the parking side, or $40,000, is that where that's coming?
That's the Pedal People contract that we have-
Oh, that's the downtown.
Plus some additional that we do internally.
That's all the downtown?
Correct. That's the Pedal People annual contract.
So then, so then from the inside, the buildings, 18, the courtesy trash, or downtown is 40, and then another 30 for the, for the schools.
Schools.
Thanks.
Sure. I also want to add that another thing that tends to be overlooked is cost-benefit analysis and investment in energy savings and the retrofitting and even the post-behavior modification that you're talking about, that the, the investment in the technology and the investment in the time and organization actually manifests as a, clearly a 25% savings significant in consumption. And that's, the fact that this is a progressive and aggressive campaign is much to your credit and the fact that you're, you're herding more cats than most people. And you have, I mean, I think MIS was talking about this last night, is essentially we have, we have not, we have data systems that don't coordinate with other departmental data systems, we have departmental cultures that necessarily, it might be a little difficult trying to get them to conform to certain behavior patterns or productive behavior patterns. I have to say, on New Year Aegis, that you've done a remarkable job. And in fact, actually, what belies is that there's the political dimension of your job that's often overlooked, frequently when hired, and I've experienced past directors in your department who have not been particularly politic or thoughtful about the political nature, and we have borne the consequences of that. And I, that's to your credit, doesn't say anything, it's not in your job description, it's not in your resume, but it's a fact, it's a feature that actually figures pretty heavily in the, a very successful execution of coordinating this antique, hobbled-together, jury-rigged system that we have and make it function like a modern system. And I just want to express my gratitude for that, so.
Thank you, and also, you know, give credit where credit's due, you know, Pastor Mason is out there thumping the Bible all the time.
I know, he usually gets my head with it, so.
Counsel Jason.
I, nothing about the budget or anything like that, but I just, I'm just going to spit it out anyway. I want to thank you for your attention to detail in the way you handle the department and your focus, which we haven't seen before in your department, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Any other questions, Congress? Time with us is done, as brief as it seems.
Thank you very much, good to see you.
Thank you so much, dear. Let's see, what time is it? We're at, we're good.
We're at 4:00.
So, 4:00, okay, so we're good. Next up, Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School, page 101 in your budget book. Who is coming to speak today for Smith Vocational?
I think there's a bunch.
Superintendent is here?
Yes, sir, Jeff Pearson, I'm the new superintendent, I think I met most of you in the fall. Also with me is Dave Tobin. He is a financial consultant and he works for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and he does a lot of work like this, helping school districts with their budgets. Nancy Roberts is our business manager. Mike Cahillane is a member of our Board of Trustees, and John Cotton is the chairman of our Board of Trustees. If I could start, I think I would like to tell you a little bit about the foundation budget and how, how, how the state comes up with the numbers that each school district must spend per pupil, all right? The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they look at each town, they look at the tax rate, they look at the median income, they look at the property values, and they say that this city, North Hampton, can spend X amount per child to send that child to Smith Vocational, okay? That amount that the state comes up with, that's called the minimum contribution, the minimum local contribution. That is a number that the city, and every city in the Commonwealth, has to pay to their school district, okay? They then take what is left over between the number that they think and the number that we were given, and they augment that by giving us Chapter 70 money, okay? So in this situation, in FY13, if I could, the state set the, the foundation budget here in North Hampton at $2,229,442, which divided by 123 North Hampton kids comes out to $18,125, okay?
How many North Hampton kids?
They then said that we feel that the city of North Hampton can afford to pay $1,757,745 to our school, all right? And that is for pupil services.
Is there something we can say?
I'm sorry, if you don't have it, I have copies, I thought you had it.
105. Yeah, 105.
Yep. I have copies if anybody needs them. Okay? So right now we're under FY13. So in essence, the city was paying $14,000, or should have paid $14,290 per student that came to our school in this fiscal year, which is this school year, okay? The interesting fact is that we charge tuition to our sending districts, $15,191. So the city gets a break of about $1,000 a kid to send a kid to our school. Going back five, five years if I could, this required district contribution has fallen short to our school district in the amount of $2,112,354. So since fiscal year 2008, our school district has received $2 million less from the city of North Hampton, which I don't think a lot of people know, but we have received $2 million less than the city was legally obliged to give us. Now, when this number comes out in the, in the spring, this required district contribution isn't a suggestion, it's a law. It has to be given by the city, okay? Fiscal year 13, the North Hampton Public Schools received 111% of their required minimum contribution. We received 71% of our required contribution. The mayor and I did speak with Jeff Wolfson at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. He did make it clear to both of us that, moving forward, that the city would be responsible for the required district contribution, all right? In the past, there has been an agreement between previous superintendents and previous mayors where there was extra money given for capital improvement projects or what have you. The mayor and I are both rather new, and I am hoping that we can come up with a similar arrangement moving forward, because we do understand, we do understand that while we feel that the city is, is getting a discount, we feel that we can help the city save more money, but we want to do that, we want to have that conversation. And looking at fiscal 14, the city is required to only give us $1,623,229. That is their only obligation to us. Now, our budget is an $8 million budget, but that all comes from tuition and grants from other towns. This city is only being charged for the 106 fiscal 14-
To the fiscal year 14-
I'm moving forward to fiscal 14.
$629,000.
I'm sorry.
Well, rather than writing that down, is that somewhere?
It is.
Looking at the same page.
Yeah.
Oh, it's in the red line.
Got it, okay. So once again, this, this page was taken directly from the DESI website, and, and every city and every district has the same amount. And the average statewide for minimum contributions, cities are paying about 120% of their minimum contribution. Like I said, North Hampton is at 111. Our district is at 71%. So we're far below minimum contribution. And I, I think the biggest thing right now, we want to come back into compliance, and I want to make it clear that this 1.6 million figure isn't a suggestion from the state, it's a state mandate. And the DESI has already said that, if I can read from an email, "Recently Superintendent Peterson notified me that the school wished to withdraw its support for this accommodation. Accordingly, I am advising the city and the school that Smith's net school spending requirement will be in full effect for fiscal year 14 and subsequent years." So that comes directly from the state of Massachusetts, and that was their ruling. We would like to see that happen, we want to be in compliance. And like I said, it's not, it's not something that we choose. If we don't believe in it, we can't pay that, we have to pay that, we have to get that money, all right? The city has proposed a total of 1.45, if I can find that here. They have proposed a budget for us of $1,450,703, which is $172,000 less than the, than the legal state mandate says that, that they need to give us. So I'm just here asking that before you vote on this, understand that the legal amount in this budget, in our budget, is the 1.623229. And if that number doesn't get voted, it needs to, I guess. I've been talking to the Department of Revenue, and the Department of Revenue is talking with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and there has been precedent set. If the city does not pay its full amounts, the city, the following fiscal year will be penalized that same amount in their Chapter 70 funding, which would mean $172,000 less to North Hampton Public Schools. Also, in the fall, the city, excuse me, the DOR would not certify the tax rate here in the city, okay? So those are the two penalties that are on the table. So I'm asking, when you vote for the budget, please take in my, keep in mind that this 1.623 number is a legal state mandate, and it can't be changed.
If we're going to open up the questions and just to point out-
Yep.
Actually, by charter, we're not allowed to add on the budget, we can subtract.
Right.
So I'm certainly not, I'm actually not appealing to us to subtract.
Right.
So we're going to open up the questions, Counsel, I'm a Counsel Spector, then Counsel Schwartz, and we'll start with that.
I'm not sure whether the debate around this is, certainly I don't want to get into it because we're not, we haven't been involved in it through all the details of this, but you make it sound very cut and dry. From what I understand, there's probably another side to this argument. From what I understand, there's probably another side to this argument. I won't ask you to make that art, you know?
Sure.
Play devil's advocate and say the other side, but from my understanding, there are two sides of this. And, um, so I understand you're making it very clear and the legal ramifications, but, uh, from what I hear, there are, there are other, there are other issues going on here.
Okay.
So, but one of the things I want to raise is just this question about, because I'm sure you want to be a, you know, you're part of this community.
Yes.
Uh, I think you want to be a good member of the community. I think you'd like to help out in any way that you can. And you probably know a lot more about this than I do, and you have a financial consultant here, but certainly one of the things going on nationwide and in the state of Massachusetts is the attempt to consolidate districts by working on a, uh, the economy of scale. So, rather than having, uh, two human resources directors, rather than having two people dealing with finances, as best you can in districts, to kind of draw those together. And regardless of whether that is the best way to go, because it may not be for other reasons, for autonomy reasons or other, I just want to hear your, your thoughts about that, about trying to consolidate some of the costs so that we don't have multiple, if, if things can be done by both districts, that it could save some costs. Now, again, I'm not talking about what philosophically may be the best way, but just from a strictly financial viewpoint.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so if the city of North Hampton doesn't pay, uh, one cent in salaries to anybody that works at this school, what they do is they...
Yeah, but you do.
The tuition does, the tuition does.
Yeah, right.
Right. The, the tuition from the other, from the...
Right, it's in your budget.
It's in our budget.
Right.
But that doesn't come from the city of North Hampton budget.
I agree.
Uh, the 1.45 million dollars goes to paying our indirect costs, which, uh, does include employees' health benefits, and it includes, uh, other items on Schedule 19, which I think Mr. Cotton would like to talk about in a moment, but, uh...
Can I just follow up then?
Sure.
I, I hear you.
Yeah.
But I go back to my first point of just, when the, the bigger district, the North Hampton School District, isn't such dire straits, but to be a good community member, if there were ways to make those savings.
Yeah.
I understand that the city is not paying that, but you're paying that in your budget.
Yeah.
And it's just a, you know, and Smith Voc is an incredibly valuable asset here, and I think this community really appreciates it. Um, I think it's done a fantastic job, and I think it'll continue to do that. But I'm just saying, just in terms of public relations with the rest of the city, where one district is suffering, if there's a way to save that kind of money...
Right.
Just from, again, philosophically, it may not be the best way for your school to go, but just strictly from a kind of business standpoint, what would be the argument against trying to consolidate some of those services? I know you're, the city's not paying that salary, but you have to pay that salary.
Sure. So, are we talking about the budget, or are we talking about merging today? Uh, what's the focus?
Well, we're talking about the budget, I'm just talking strictly on the budget, because I don't want to get into the philosophic side or the legal side, I'm just getting your opinion.
So, we shouldn't really talk about, should we talk about the merger today, or should we do that another time, or, or should we...
I think, I think the frame of question is essentially the, uh, the essence of the question without, without setting up, is that trying to determine whether the perceived redundancies would make sense to amalgamate and function as, as, as a same unit, relative to a budget discussion, an overall budget discussion. It may inform a conversation later on about possibly considering of the discussion going forward about consolidation. I think what the council's trying to get at is, do you think in a financial way, if it makes any sense, to consider consolidating to eliminate redundancies? Uh, for, for you to function or manage a system, manage a system that you're charged with managing.
Right. I'm unprepared to talk about that today, and I would love to talk about that in the future.
All right. Uh, Councilor Schwartz?
Well, I'm just, um, thank you for being here. Appreciate your perspective, and I feel uncomfortable hearing it without, um, you, you've, you've made some, some strong statements about this legal mandate and the North, and the city of North Hampton is violating that mandate, and I feel uncomfortable hearing that without giving an opportunity for the mayor who's here to just, uh, respond to that, without necessarily going into a full-fledged debate, but I feel like...
The mayor is available to speak on all...
I want to hear a response to what you just said, because I need to get better informed.
I, I, Mayor, I think that's directed at you, so if you want to respond. Sure. Yeah. Sure, I'd be good, just with the mic, well.
Um, uh, where do I begin? Uh, so, uh, there's a reference to a letter from Mr. Wolfson, who's the, um, uh, Under-Secretary for the Department of, uh, Elementary and Secondary Education, who, yes, we have been in touch with. Um, I guess the best way to describe this is, and I think I've said this publicly, uh, Smith Vocational is unique in many ways, and that's all great, but especially the way that it's, uh, that it fits into the funding formula for, um, for our public schools in Massachusetts. Um, it, it really was not envisioned when Chapter 70 was written. It doesn't fit into, uh, if you actually read the language, we've had, we've had legal discussions with about them, about their interpretation of even Chapter 70, um, because what's happening here is there's a, uh, an application of a, this so-called net school spending formula to, we have, we're the only community in the state that has two, uh, net school spending formulas, uh, because they, they are, they recognize that we have two districts, although we have actually two local schools. Um, so, in recog, and the other piece of this is that most of the, the other communities are paying a set tuition, you know, uh, a set tuition, and, uh, and the city of North Hampton is absorbing not only, um, the, the costs of our educating our ki, the normal cost of educating our kids, but we are also paying for all of the capital expenses. Um, we're also paying for, uh, things like, you know, retiree health insurance, a number of other things, uh, that we, that we pay for, um, that don't get reflected in that. So, the reference to the previous agreement, uh, was really frankly a recognition on the state's part, uh, that that formula didn't really quite fit. So, they've been willing to look at, and I believe it's the right way to do it, is to look collectively at the entire city of North Hampton and all the schoolchildren in North Hampton, and using a, a sort of a combined net school spending number, which has been, that's been the arrangement that was in place prior to that. Um, and so, uh, this reference to, you know, five years ago, uh, five years of, of overdue money, there's no overdue money, the, the Department, DC, uh, blessed that agreement between the school and the city in recognition of the fact that we were, uh, that we were paying, um, you know, for all these additional costs that didn't get factored into the formula. So, I've actually provided, I've put together a helpful one-page sheet that I can pass out, uh, that can sort of show you what I believe are the costs, um, in terms of what we're paying for. Uh, and I'd be happy to share that now, or we could talk about it later, whatever you'd like to do.
Well, if you pass that out, um, would you speak to the liability that's being projected?
Certainly. So, uh, there's a, this issue, well, we, it's, I'm glad we actually have a consultant here, but it, there's been this long, there's been this debate that I've been having with the trustees, uh, and the superintendent about interpretation of what the net school number actually is. I actually believe the budget they've put before you doesn't need net school spending either, uh, but that's a side issue in terms of what the actual net school spending number is. Uh, we believe that, um, uh, we believe, again, we've had discussions with, um, with, with DC and their, and their legal staff about this. I mean, my approach is that we don't believe that that's a correct interpretation of net school spending, and I'm willing to challenge that, and we will, if we have to. The liability piece of it would have, would happen, uh, when we got to the end of the fiscal year if we had not provided that so-called amount. My, my plan, obviously, is to begin a discussion, um, earlier than that, which I think I've signaled to the community. What he didn't read was if you get to the end of that letter from Mr. Wolfson, Mr. Wolfson suggests that, you know, this has been a continuous issue, and that we would really be interested in working with you to looking at a new system, a new model for the school, including merging it with the North Hampton School District. That's how Mr. Wolfson closes his letter, um, as he closes other letters, because again, if you look at the list of schools that the state has, they've got, you know, Acton through Yarmouth, all, you know, 351 local schools, then they've got Smith School by itself, and then they've got the regional schools. It's not a regional school, and it's really not a, a local city school district. It doesn't quite fit into either category, and they've kind of shoehorned it in, um, because again, we're, we're the only town that's being applied, that the net school spending formula is being applied to. It's not being applied to all the other, uh, communities that are participating. So, there's a disparity in the funding that, that's happening, and, and the state has been willing to recognize that. So, I, I can pass this out, and you can take a look at it, and we can talk about it.
By the way, uh, as far as the microphone goes...
There is no microphone.
Uh, the microphone is on the top of that camera.
Did I give you, oh, wait a second. Hey.
And, Mr. Peterson, you'll have an opportunity to respond. Uh, Councilor Schwartz, it's still...
Well, I'm just wondering about what we're doing in this context for this 30-minute increment. I mean, as, I, and I really appreciate where we started, and I...
Well, I guess what I want to say is, I've put forward a budget to you for this particular department, um, and, uh, this particular department has voted a, a higher budget. I'm actually a trustee, I was on the Board of Trustees. I didn't vote for that budget. Um, and I believe in our legal counsel, we've had back and forth, their legal counsel and our legal counsel, uh, that they don't actually have a, uh, that they need, they're not an independent regional school district that gets to set its own appropriation level. So, that's a debate we've been having. Um, so, but in terms of what I'm proposing for their budget, uh, and looking at the actual costs that we're paying, uh, what we've done is, up above, I've got my proposed appropriation for Smith Voc School, um, and it shows the various, uh, pieces of that. Um, it shows, um, the, uh, you know, the indirect cost that the superintendent was referring to, and that's co, that's a common, that's a term that gets used for NPS and for Smith Voc. It's, it's the things that, when we talk about how we pay for healthcare for all the teachers on the, out of a city budget, that's not in the school budget, but they recognize that that's a cost to your education budget, that, that's being paid that way, or, or other factors like that. Um, Chapter 70, which is the money that comes to us for our, for our kids in North Hampton, and then we receive from the Smith Charities this year, we're receiving $8,900 from the Smith Charities, which we also appropriate to them. So, um, in terms of our expenditure, uh, per North Hampton student, we've sort of go across the line here, and we've, we've, uh, played out, you know, I think what I'm gonna actually do is, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Susan to, to, to walk through this with me, because she's the one who has updated this chart today.
Okay.
I have two copies, and also, do you have your copies?
Yep.
So, this, this chart is not really a net school spending student per pupil cost.
Not based on that formula.
Right. This is, it is and it isn't. This is a look at what are we really spending? What dollars in the city budget are actually going towards Smith Voc? So, as the mayor said, you have the indirect costs, and those are 1.4 million. That includes the insurance for the teachers, uh, the retirement assessment, because all of the non-teaching staff at Smith Voc are in our retirement system. It's a share of MIS, because we provide Munis and, and computer, um, networking to, to Smith Voc. It's a share of a number of, of things in the city that we can quantify, that the state allows us to quantify under the net school spending formula. So, that indirect cost is a number that's related to net school spending, and for FY 14, it's estimated at 1.4 million. And then there's the Chapter 70, and then there's Smith Charities. So, what qualifies towards net school spending that we know we'll be spending in FY 14 is 2.3 million. There's 106 students in the Smith Voc budget, um, from North Hampton for next year, so when you divide that out, it comes out to about 22,197 per student. Then if you look below that, there's a number of costs that aren't included in net school spending, that the state doesn't give us credit for in the net school spending formula, but these are costs that North Hampton bears, and if we were a regional school district, these costs would be shared by all the member communities. They wouldn't be counted in net school spending, but all the member communities would be paying a portion of this. But because we're not a regional school, the other 40 communities do not have to contribute to any of the other costs. So, what we don't get credit for in net school spending is retiree health insurance, which is about 200,000. We don't get credit for covering insurance, uh, liability, building liability, vehicles for Smith Voc. That's a $30,000 expense. And then the debt service for all the capital improvements that we've done at Smith Voc over the years that we're currently paying debt service on. So, that's another 371,000. This number, by the way, does not include the $150,000 that's going to be put into, um, to one of the capital orders for the Building B boiler. So, this number for 14 will actually be bigger when we update that. So, when you add another $600,000 worth of costs, that's what North Hampton is taking on, that we're not sharing with the other communities that send their kids here. We have about 25% of the kids at Smith Voc. If this was a regional school district, these costs would be most likely apportioned based on the percentage of students. So, if we were a regional school, the other communities would be picking up about 75% of this, we'd be paying about 25%, but we pay 100%. So, if you really want to come to a number about what North Hampton actually spends at Smith Voc, you need to add that, that cost and divide it by the 106 students. So, for each student, it comes up to about 5,800. So, when you add that to what we're spending up above, the 22,197, then we spend another 5,813, we're spending about $28,000 per student to send the student, $28,000 per student for a, for a Smith Voc student. The tuition that is paid by the other municipalities, however, is set by the trustees. There's a maximum amount for, um, that the state allows, and then the trustees are free to choose at any other amount that's either that amount or less. They chose a, a lower amount. It's 16,200. So, you can see North Hampton, when you add it all together, and again, I, I want to qualify this by saying it's not just a net school spending calculation here, we're adding the capital costs. When you look at this, North Hampton's paying about $11,000 more than East Hampton, or Williamsburg, or any other town that's sending their student to, to Smith Voc. Now, some of those towns may be sending students that are special ed, so we have to recognize the fact that, um, those communities are assessed if the student is special ed. And that assessment, um, for Smith Voc is 4,190. So, a community that might be sending a student from another town would pay the 6,200 in FY 14, and another 4,190 for sped students. So, when you add that in, and again, not all the students are sped, but to make this a, try to make this a fair comparison, a stu, a student coming to Smith Voc that has special ed needs would, their community would pay about 20,000, so North Hampton would be paying about 7,600 more per student than, than, um, another community. And, you know, we did look, we looked at North Hampton Public Schools to make a comparison. Again, this is not an apples to oranges, um, comparison, because we all know that vocational ed costs more, and that North Hampton Public Schools is a K through 12, and as students age through the system, high school is the most expensive, um, you know, level that you're educating kids at. So, the number, it's not quite a really good comparison, but just, you know, for fun, we kind of looked at what the numbers are for North Hampton Public Schools. And again, the indirect costs that get counted in North Hampton Public Schools' net school spending is 4.4 million, then the Chapter 77 million, and then the additional appropriation is 17, uh, million. There's 2,765 students, so it's about 10,484 per student. And then below, I did the same kind of calculation, the stuff that North Hampton Public Schools does not get to count in net school spending, and that's the retiree health insurance, the same thing, the vehicle, building liability, the crossing guards, which is one category that isn't in Smith Voc, and then debt service. So, if you look at the numbers, we're spending about $28,000 per student at Smith Voc, we're spending about 12 at North Hampton Public Schools. And again, we all know vocational ed is, is a more, more intense as far as money, especially at the high school level, so I just want to qualify that.
But the reason why this act, we do this exercise is to show that, that the, again, the, using that nets, just that net school spending formula in a vacuum, not recognize, and, and the state recognizes that, that this is a very unique situation, uh, and so that's why they've been willing over the last several years to, essentially, recognize this and allow credit for all this other spending that we're doing at the school. And that's been the arrangement prior to, uh, the new superintendent's arrival. He's now signaled that he wants to end that arrangement, um, and, uh, and again, this is a, uh, if you look at our actual, my proposed appropriation, you'll see, uh, that they'll be, they're, they're, they will be experiencing an increase, uh, in their budget, they'll be seeing an increase in FTEs, and compare that with our other school, our, our primary school district, uh, where the reverse is true. Um, uh, and so that's sort of the, the backdrop of why I made the budget proposal that I did. Um, and again, we're in discussions with the state, and I'm actually, as I've, as I've made quite publicly clear, I intend to have a conversation about changing the structure, which even the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has recommended in letters dating back as far as when they were writing to Mayor Higgins about this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Schwartz, you saw the floor, you... Thank you. Counselor Schwartz, you saw the floor. Are you...
Yeah, thank you very much.
Are there other questions?
No.
Superintendent, you want to come up?
I'd like Mr. Tobin to come on up.
Mr. Tobin, however, you're not, of course...
I think there's advisors.
You're an advisor, so you're not actually staff member. You're not representing...
Absolutely.
Okay. Please, please.
And that's why I'm here. My name is Dave Tobin. I'm a retired superintendent of schools for 22 years. But I retired quite a few years ago. And I've spent the last couple of decades advising school systems and different agencies about the school finance formula. It's an area that is my niche, and I work at it and live it. I have to say this. I have been out three times to Smith School and to Northampton on this very same issue. And this is the third time. The first two times, an amicable agreement was achieved in our discussions. I have enormous, remote respect for the Smith School. It does an outstanding job, and I could sing its praises to you. I can also sing the praises for the City of Northampton. I love the city. I come out anytime I can. The superintendent has me out every October to train area superintendents. They all love to come to Northampton, too. I refer to it as Cambridge. Cambridge is the Northampton of the East. That's...
Well, we'll let that go.
Except it's very people-friendly, and it's very evident in this community. So I have no vested interest in either one of the two things. Smith School is a unique place. And the funding of Smith School is a unique contraption. Why do I say it's a unique place? First of all, it's student body. Over 50% of the kids at Smith School are low-income kids. That brings greater money to the school district. Over 50% of the kids from Northampton, 52% of them to be exact, are low-income kids that come to Smith. This is their chance at secondary education. In the founding... in the foundation formula, the amount of money for vocational students runs about $19,000 because of their low-income population, because the vocational programs are so expensive, because they have a larger number of special needs kids in their school districts. 40% of the kids at Smith School are under a special education... educational plan. Statewide, the percentage is 17%. So they're carrying more than their load for that. And so the next question is, how are they doing with that? I mean, after all, the kids only spend half their time in academics. The other half of the time, they're in the shops. Okay? Well, they speak English in the shops. They write, keep reports. They calculate things. They take the academic content and apply it in the context of work and life. And that is why 95% of the students who go to Smith Tech graduate in four years. 96.2% of the students who have disabilities graduate from Chief Tech. I'd like to say that one again. Let's round it off. 93%. I mean, that's strong. I know there's a concern that I'm...
Excuse me, Tobin. I'm just sorry.
...talking the case.
That's okay. And by the way, I should say, as you are preaching to the choir here...
Yes.
...about the value of Smith Vocational. In fact, actually, you're going to find one of the strongest advocates for Smith Vocational right here that's going to trump you. In fact, in some respect, she can outsell the virtues of Smith Vocational on that. And so, just so we're clear on that. And the purpose here, of course, is to... we're trying to... This is the first time Smith Vocational's come before us in a long time historically. And what we're trying to do is, in a time of fiscal crisis, which I think is not putting too much emphasis on the issue at hand, we are charged with reviewing the finances of every department. And this one... this actually was by invitation, a request for invitation from the trustees. They asked for an opportunity to present that. And you're making a case for Smith Vocational to people who firmly believe in the mission and the abilities of Smith Vocational. We're down to the really boring, soulless conversation about money and how we assign the money and how we deal with the money and how we allocate the money. And I know... so if you'll allow us, the counselors will have some questions about that. And you're allowed to... you're certainly allowed to continue with your testimony. But Counselor Schwartz, the other question.
Well, actually, my question was more the statement that you just said. So in other words, I guess I'm trying to keep us as... I have an instinct to want to try to focus the conversation because, again, I salute your summary of the value of Smith-Vogue. And like Counselor Dwight said, there is... you don't need to convince us. It's clearly an incredible asset to our community. So the question is this financing. I mean, I thought that you were getting... the superintendent was going to get up to respond to what the mayor had to say. And if you're taking his place, so be it. But I would love to have us stay focused on the finance mechanisms and how we're doing as a budget matter.
And I apologize because I know what you said is true because there's evidence you always supported the schools. So let's just talk about the money differences. My interest is finding middle ground between two parties that have set the stake in the ground and are publicly discussing the differences. Middle ground is somewhere between $1,623,000 and $1,450,000 plus this, plus that. Okay? And I believe sincerely, if people of goodwill, who are interested in the continued success at the level that it has performed, work on it. And that's what I would encourage. I believe if the two parties can come to an agreement, that the state will say, "All right, you're doing this." What each party's saying is a perspective. The state is saying the net school spending requirement has to be reached unless you can do an accommodation. So that's my pitch. There's another piece of that. The previous agreement included a compromise that was rational, had... was... could be related to the reality, but also took into consideration the capital cost. Now, right now, there is approval from the School Building Assistance Bureau for a needed renovation to the agricultural program, which is the foundation of the school, and science programs in the school that has been put on hold. Reimbursement for... let's imagine that that project were a $10 million project. There's 75% reimbursement that comes with that package from School Building Assistance. Now, I want to tell you, if you were doing something just with Northampton, it wouldn't be that 75% reimbursement. All right? So for a bond issue of, let's say, $2.5 million spread over 30 years, I would encourage folks to put that on the table at all, as well, in this discussion. So with that, I encourage you to find an answer so that you can continue the success of the school.
Thank you for your charge. By the way, now I have a question from Counselor Murphy, Counselor Speckler, Counselor Freeman. So as a consultant...
Don't call me a consultant. I think I'm here as a friend for both the city and...
As whatever role you play at Smith-Vogue. Whatever role that may be. When you look at the mayor's proposal and grasp the scope of the other services the City of Northampton uniquely provides and the difference in net school spending, would you advise the superintendent of Smith-Vogue to draw this line in the sand and say, "I'm willing to perhaps compromise all the rest of the money the City of Northampton sends to Smith-Vogue over wanting the net school spending number to reflect what the state finishes?"
I think I stated to what I would say to both parties because I just said it to both parties. Okay? So that is what I did say, sir. I want to say that 271 cities and towns do belong to regional vocational school districts. They meet all the net school spending standards of those. And in addition to that, they pay for the capital cost and transportation and so forth. So that is what currently... The performance... there are two recent studies. I encourage you to look at them. One of them is done by the Beacon Institute, Relative to the Effectiveness of the Regional Vocational Model. And the other one is done by the Harvard... pardon me, Cambridge again. Harvard Graduate School of Education, which is called Pathways to Prosperity. And it describes the model we're talking about. So there are... just one other.
Are we talking about dollars or performance?
Yep. Say that again.
I'm talking about dollars.
Yes, okay.
I accept the great performance.
Same... the same way with the dollars. Those school districts, the amount of money being spent per student at Smith is about in the middle of the average for the regional vocational schools in the state.
You know what? I think Superintendent, would you... Because clearly, some of these are more red line, black line questions to you. And I love Counselor Murphy still to have the floor until now. And Counselor Speckler, Counselor Freeman.
So my question really is in the context of this budget that's on our table for tonight. Not whether the future merits support a regional school, the same system, or integrating Smith-Vogue in. We're talking about this budget. We're talking the difference between your budget and the mayor's budget and the line in the sand over foundation. And you seem to want foundation plus everything else that we're already providing. And what the mayor's saying is, no, we want to... you know, we expect to pay a different number because of all of the other things we put in to support the school, which has been the tradition over the last couple of years.
Right.
So Chapter 70 money is in City of Northampton money. Chapter 70 money comes from the state. It goes to the City of Northampton, who in turn mails the check to us. So the problem there is the check goes to the city and then it comes to us. That Chapter 70 money is earmarked for us. So that can't count in the mayor's calculations. It can't because that's not their money. It's our money. The Smith charity's money, but it's the truth.
The Northampton children. I'm sorry. I'll give you the floor. I don't want you to blow my mind. I guess I'm back to Counselor Schwartz's...
Yeah. Statement earlier where she's uncomfortable with the discussion. I've been on the council for a long time. And I think that this discussion is really about a negotiation that you're having with the city. In the past, anytime the whole council with nine people starts to get all engaged in this, and there may not be a negotiation. But the topic itself, we're looking at a budget. We're looking at the mayor's budget. And I understand your appeal to us, and I think that's part of it. Last time at the council meeting, I believe the chair of the board came. And I think that was totally appropriate, to appeal and make a public statement about where he stood on this. Somehow, though, to come here when we're doing the budget thing, I'm not sure we can be helpful here. And I'm not sure we're not going to just muddy this. We're also coming in in a very intricate process where I certainly, as best I can, I think I understand what's going on. But again, I don't feel I have all the information, nor should I. I don't think that's our place as the council right now because we've been handed the mayor's budget here, which is the budget that we can deal with. That's what we have. We can't add anything. So even if we wanted to, we can't turn around and say, you know what? We don't agree with you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's an $85,000 difference here, and we're going to cut it so that we think we should give Smith-Vogue back $60,000. We have no authority to do that. So therefore, I'm not sure what our discussion here tonight... We perhaps could schedule, because this is a long discussion. We may want to, at some point, schedule something. The mayor thinks you should. The council president thinks we should. But I think this is a different discussion. So I bring that same discomfort here with us jumping in.
Excuse me. I'm going to respectfully disagree on one level. We have fiduciary responsibility that we were charged with, is to review dimensions of the budget. Now, by and large, we review and talk to departments on discretionary spending and allocations and capital investments and all the other associated costs because it is a responsibility borne by the community.
Yes.
And that's our job. And to date, and actually, when the trustees have asked if it could be invited, I thought this was an appropriate venue to discuss our obligation, which the superintendent is claiming our obligation is underfunded. The mayor is claiming our obligation is funded appropriately and perhaps to an extent. I think if we stay on that point, and this is my frustration, we stay on that point because the critical point... The discussion about the value of vocational school and vocational education is begging the question. And I want to stay on those points.
Since it was directed to me, can I answer that? I agree with you. I'm just not sure... I think we hear the two sides.
Right.
I'm not sure where after that besides that... you may be right. It can go somewhere. But I agree with you. We've heard the two arguments.
Well, Counselor Murphy's question was asking the superintendent to reconcile the claims that the mayor laid out. And I think if you could address those points. And as you're saying, that the Chapter 70 obligations shouldn't count towards that calculus because Chapter 70 money is state-assigned money. But of course, as you recognize, of course, we also figured in the Northampton Public School system, Chapter 70 is our portion of the state give-back on a community investment. So it is, by extension, Counselor Tacey makes this argument over and over again and is absolutely right, that those are our tax dollars that we are also considering in overspending. So just so... and I think what happens is... And I think part of the problem we're having here is there's a defense posture assumed because of the conflict that's existing. And that's informing the rest of the conversation. But I really do think it's incumbent upon us to stay on point discussing these particular numbers that are represented, which is, this is a compelling case. It's laid out here. So... and you may address that. I just want to make sure that Counselor Freeman Daniels is comfortable with allowing the superintendent to speak to that, or do you have a question you want to add to that? You were up next, so...
Well, I think Counselor Carney was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, you know, my questions are timeless, so...
Always. Yes.
And since mine was the last question on the floor, because even though there might be this apostolic concept of, are we going to change the structure at some point? We ain't doing it this year. We're dealing with this budget now for FY '14. Whatever may happen down the road, we're staying in bed together for 2014, pretty much just the way we are. So we got to kind of work this out for 2014. And then if there's a grander discussion about changing structure or not changing structure, it's going to happen later.
So that being said, and I agree, and I would like to have the conversation with everybody about how can we live together better? For fiscal '14, all right, the State of Massachusetts has mandated that the city has to give us 1.623. And the city is offering 1.45. Now, all the other capital improvement projects that don't count towards net school spending, but they are paying, acknowledged. We need to discuss that. We need to talk about that. Okay? Please, keep in mind, I'm a first-year superintendent, and I'm trying to do what's best for both my students and the students of Northampton. Okay?
Sure. Rhetorically, why don't we just pay that? And just deduct it from something else we're giving away for it? It's the same total dollar for us. We give you your net school spending, and we say, okay, we'll just take it from here and call it net school spending.
Right. So when the city pays net school spending to Northampton High School, all right? And I'm not sure what that number is. If they then want to put a new roof on the high school, that number doesn't come out of net school spending. Net school spending is kid money. It's student money. That is money to be spent on the pupils and their education. The buildings, the taxes on the vehicles, that's outside of net school spending. That's not money that's being directly spent on education. And we do acknowledge... listen, we do acknowledge that. We do acknowledge that. Going forward, I want to have a conversation with everybody about how can we do this better? Until the law changes, though, we have to go by it. Until the law changes, we have to abide by it. I will go to the State House with the mayor, and I will sit down with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Elementary and Secondary Education, and I will come up, him and I, with a plan that works for everybody, that we can both sign on to, I promise you. But until that time, there's a legal obligation to pay us net school spending.
Uh, Counsel Carney.
Am I way up?
Yeah, Counsel Carney worked, and then Counsel Tacey.
I'm just frustrated with this whole conversation, with, well, with the whole piece of it, looking at the numbers in the book, with the fact of the discrepancy, with the heated level that this has risen to. And I understand that Mr. Tovin's the only superintendent, and we know Mayor Narkowitz is in his second year working out an arrangement with Smith Voke, but I'm at least heartened by the comments that Mr. Tovin made about having come numerous times to the city and sat down with previous superintendents and mayors, and come to a workable arrangement, because we do have, you know, arguably the best Voke school in the country. I mean, we see that we're now, I'm not going to get on, we all agree with that. But I just would really like to bring the level of emotionality down a few notches on this topic, and try to, I mean, even as Counselor Murphy alluded to, there must be a way that even though Superintendent, you said that this is the obligation that must be met, and Mayor, I see you kind of, shaking your hand, saying no, 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 we've done it in the past, we've done it numerous times, in fact, this is the first year that we've not been able to do it in, I don't know how many decades that the school has existed. I'm especially frustrated too by the last, you know, sometimes getting, just getting sheets in and of themselves, I mean, they can be read a million ways, but it is apples and oranges to try to look at Northampton School, High School, or Northampton Schools and the Voke School, and it does, I mean, it's a different, it's a different form of education, and it costs considerably more for kids at the Voke School level, that's the end of the stock for them. That's their post, they don't typically go on, some may go on to a community college, but for most, it ends right there. And so, I don't know, I'm just hoping that we can, again, we can't do anything about this at this level, this body, this body can't do that, so I just want to see it brought down.
One other thing is though, that clearly we are one of the few public venues in which the conversation at some point can be spoken about. Counsel Tacey, then Counsel LeBarge.
Yeah, I just want everybody to go away thinking that we don't realize that Smith School is a huge asset, and I've said that a million times at these meetings, we drive by Smith School, I never take Smith School for granted, never. In 1942, my godfather had certificates of achievement at that time, there were no diplomas, and from the welding division, and he ended up heading the welding division at Pratt-Woodney Aircraft in Hartford in 1950, eight years later. So there's some huge success stories at Smith School, we all realize that. But in this new fiscal, we have to, we're just looking at this number at this point, this discussion about the structure and the administration and all this at Smith School is going to happen at a later date.
Okay.
And I would very much like to just focus on this period and move on, because you're not going to find any bigger advocates than this council for Smith School. That's all I got to say about it. I'd like to focus on this, on the numbers before us.
Counsel LeBarge, you were up next.
And I do believe that chapter 70 money is city money, is part of the funding formula.
And I want to echo what Counsel Tacey just said about that, on the chapter 70 money. As long as I've been a city councilor, I have never, never seen this back and forth on the floor, in finance, going through a budget, and I'm not happy about what I saw tonight at all. And I think when it comes to a situation about walking through this door, coming into budget hearings, it wasn't the budget, apparently there's a problem going on with the mayor, with you and the board of merging that school. And you came through this door with that on your shoulders, that's not what I'm here for tonight. I've been born and raised in this city, and I want you to understand it as a superintendent, okay? I have many, many families who have graduated from Smith Vocational, and it is one of the best schools. We need to get down to business, we have a budget to look at and approve for the mayor, okay? So you need to understand, this is our mayor here. Not everybody is perfect, you're not perfect, but to outright come out and tell us, okay, that he is wrong about this or wrong about that, I don't like it. I don't like working like that, I have a job to do, and that's to get this budget done. Down the line, and I agree with my council president, I agree with Counselor Murphy, okay? That time will come when we will have a talk about what you are worried about, because I think there's many, many people, but I'm not really happy about what occurred here tonight.
Counsel Freeman Daniels, time for your timeless question.
I would like to know how we're going to bring this part of the discussion to a close, because I do believe you're talking about our duty, and I certainly respect our duty, I think we have to acknowledge the limits of how we can apply our duty under this circumstance with a live debate, that we are not in a position tonight to respond to with any foundation, any meaningful foundation.
I think, I think we have, at least as far as Northampton's fiduciary responsibility for both sides, for all of this, and there was a conflict, I do both parties feel that they've made their case to its completion, the mayor does.
No, I don't actually.
You don't?
I have more information than that.
Do you want to do it at this time, or do you want to?
Yes, we'd appreciate it.
And actually.
Can I actually, can I come back into the mix then?
Yep, absolutely.
This is only my second budget hearing, or budget season, first time we've heard from Smith Vocational. So what I'd really like to do is go with the, take the budget that we have in front of us, and hear from you, Mr. Superintendent, and from anyone else that you'd like to bring forward as to how you plan on working with the budget that has been assigned to you. And I have, I've given the mayor a lot of praise, and I'm not going to give him any more today, because then I would just be taking up more time, even though I think he deserves it, with his fiscal responsibility when it comes to the city. And I don't think, and we will hear from him in the future, and we will hear from the Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School in the future regarding exactly what Counsel Murphy talked about as a separate issue. And so what I'd like to hear from, and maybe this is an attempt to redirect the discussion, is how you intend on, how you intend to work within the budget that you have presented to us, and what the sacrifices will be regarding this discrepancy, which is, you know, about $180,000, and what that will be in your, from what you're working on.
If that's the case, I'm going to have to meet with the board, and I'll have to meet with the business manager and the school principal, and we're going to have to reevaluate what we have, simply. Do I know right now? I don't. I mean, I would have to communicate with the other stakeholders in that. And I do apologize, I did, as a budget hearing, wanted to tell you my concerns on the budget, and I know that the conversation did take a turn towards the school takeover, which is not something that I intended on, so I do apologize for that. But it was my intention just to make everybody aware of the whole net school spending issue and where we stand on it, all right? So if I offended anybody, I apologize, that wasn't my intent.
Counsel Tacey, so you had these numbers in front of you, and you didn't come here prepared at a budget hearing to tell us how you would tackle this number?
Um, I believe.
I mean, I find that, I just find it odd. These were the numbers that you had to look at, I just find it odd that you did not come here prepared to discuss your budget, just to discuss the amount of money that you're not getting. I mean, this is, this is the end of the season.
I have to echo that, I'm a little surprised that, that at this stage in the game, you don't have a contingency if you don't get the additional money you're requesting. Why is that?
I was planning on getting our, the legal mandate, 1.6, that's what I was planning on.
Counsel Murphy, then Counsel Carney.
Well, I can understand, because this is the first time they've been here, they've not gone through, really through this process before. We see Smith Voke at capital improvements, which is something that you're used to doing all the time.
Right.
And this budget, I'm assuming they looked at this budget hearing as a forum, where we look at it as a, you know, let's deal with the budget that's in front of us. So I can excuse that misunderstanding, because they have not come to this venue before, and they came advocating a certain position, but at the same time, that doesn't change our role. I mean, really, all we can do is approve the budget the mayor gave to us, or cut it. So we can't actually do anything about your foundation question whatsoever.
Or vote it down.
Or vote it down. We really can't deal with that. You know, what we've dealt with here is, you know, the police department telling us that the lack of money we're giving them is going to result without an override of losing four patrol officers, and our own school department's probably going to tell us without an override, we're losing six FTEs, 15.
11.
11 FTEs now in their schools. So that's, I guess, where the misunderstanding is, is we've been dealing, you know, we do this all the time and you don't, and we're just, we're at a different place than you are, but I want to say that at least I can understand that misunderstanding, because you've not been here and gone through this process with us before, but I do commend you for asking to come.
Thank you.
Counsel Carney.
Okay, well, what we have is the budget that was presented by the mayor, right, for Smith Voke, is that correct? So these numbers that we see here is not the, is not the budget that was prepared by the business manager and your office. The one that we're looking at in our book is a different budget than what was voted, it's the same budget than?
The budget that was voted on was the one, there's one page in that document that was the document that the trustees voted on. That's different than the budget that I submitted to you, which would be reflected in the front, revenue, into the expenditure section of the budget.
So are you saying that the budget, the number of pages that we see here, I just haven't found? Yeah, so what we're looking at here is not the same as the one that you folks voted on, the Board of Trustees voted on? This one that we're looking at on page 101?
That is the budget, that's the page, I don't even know where it is.
101 to 119.
102, so it's 102.
Well, I have all the information here about Smith Voke that goes on and on.
Page 107, page 107, yeah, page 107 was the, just 107 was what the trustees were for presented to vote on.
Okay, but the business manager prepared all of these pages here, where he can't tell them?
After the fact, they prepared this information, that's correct. But that is not the budget that I have submitted to you. That's, I put that in there for your information, the trustees voted a different budget than the budget that I had presented.
So if we add up all the numbers that's in this budget here, that we have in front of us, those would be $185,000 more?
No, actually not, it's only, there's a, I mean.
It would be different?
It's not $170,000.
Okay, I'm sorry, $172,000.
Actually, it's about 80,000, it's only different.
Okay.
It's an $80,000 difference between what they voted and what my proposed budget is.
Okay, so we know that we're talking about approximately, we're talking about on a $1 million, on a $1.4 million total?
You mean the city?
No, no, the total.
Was I trying to tell them that night?
Yes, 8 million. So of the 8 million, of the 8 million dollar budget, we're talking about a difference of 85,000 approximately?
What's that again?
It's about 8,000.
There's about an $80,000.
Of an 8 million dollar budget.
And I should tell you that last year, the same incident occurred as well, they voted a budget higher than the budget that I submitted.
I'm sorry, so we're talking about a difference of 1% approximately? Okay. All right, so.
We're laying off another FTE or two in the NPS to fund that, so that's, in a budget that's seeing an increase in FTEs. So if you look at the FTE.
Well, I think it's a bit highly charged to.
It's not highly charged, you're adding FTEs, you're getting a 6% increase.
The reason I say that it's highly charged is.
The council is a force.
Okay, the reason that I suggest it may be highly charged, and that's why I'm asking to ratchet this down a bit, is we're pitting, we're pitting districts against each other by saying that with the difference, that the difference in 1% equals that, we might as well say the name of the person who's going to be laid off from the Northampton Public Schools, and, you know, that's what I'm saying. It's not, it could be, it could be $1,000 from 80 different locations, you know, there's a number of ways that it could actually equalize. But the point is, this is something that does need to be worked out. I understand that you folks had a budget that you worked out that's 90, it's actually 101% or whatever that difference is, different than the one that is approved or that's being given to us by the mayor. And I understand that of that 80,000, you haven't gone through and shown this body where you expect to cut that 80,000, but I'll grant you, as Counsel Murphy did, that this is the first time really that this hasn't been negotiated and worked out in, what, 100 years, I don't know, many decades, many, many decades.
That's not true, because net school spending hasn't existed for 100 years, so it's a creation of 1993, and it does not apply to.
20 years though, 20 years, I'm sorry.
In the absence of a gavel.
Again, what I'm saying is that this is an extreme, clearly a very heated issue, and I'm just asking if we can ratchet things down a bit on both sides, please, because when this gets out to the community, it's going to be equally heated, and we have to find a way to rationally deal with this issue, because it has deep inroads into not just this community, but our ties to the Hilltown communities, has a strong impact.
I agree. The, actually, I have a number of questions, but I'm going to let them lay, but, and they are fiduciary, it's also about, and when the Northampton Public School Superintendent came before us last year, for instance, even before budgetary hearings, what he did was the, there was a request for level funding budget, they presented instead to us a level funding budget, a level service budget, and then an optimal budget. It was not necessarily ideal, and I think as a political tool, it did create the divisions that Counsel Carney is referring to, that these things, because all budgets, particularly budgets that require cuts, budgets that require an override, are intrinsically informed by emotions, because we're arguing over priorities and we're fighting over the scraps that we have left. And I think that, given the fact that Smith Vocational hasn't really been part of this before, that accounts for the fact that maybe, you know, going to the long guns right off probably wasn't the best option for my council. The fact is, is that all departments, every department in the city, we've been treated and we've talked to, and we're speaking in the context of the pressures that are being put upon us by a substantial deficit. And this speaks to what Counsel Freeman Daniels is saying, and I think what Counsel Schwartz is saying, that in, and Counsel Spector actually brought it up first, in that context, in holistic perspective, this is our charge. We're looking at a holistic system, not parsing out department versus department, and it's unfortunate, because that's unfortunate where most of the fights happen. People, departments fighting with other departments about who deserves what more or what. And the thing is, is actually, what I'm asking, as you, as this conversation goes forward, that we think about pulling wars together instead of smacking each other inside the boat, trying to figure out who gets more money.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and I think, uh, Council Freeman Daniels, you get to have the last word, if you like.
Yeah, actually, um, I, I'd like to make a recommendation.
Sure.
That we keep this portion of the hearing, uh, open for the next, for our next meeting.
The next council meeting?
Our next here, our next budget hearing.
Does anyone want to contribute? We don't have?
This is it.
This is it, that we vote on it?
We, well, no, we don't vote on it yet.
No, we?
And we can convene, and by the way, I'm sorry, when we can schedule, we have two potential speakers.
My point is that, um, the Superintendent indicated that he does want to return to his, to his board and so on, um, to deal with, uh, to, to make a presentation. And I think that the council, because this is, uh, this is their first presentation, the council should give them, uh?
A duo?
Another chance at, at coming back and working within the confines of the mayor's proposal. Um, so, so, and I would, I would like to, uh, see if we could, could in fact have a,
The council is, the councilor is asking for?
I'll second that for the sake of the council.
So, there's a second?
May I ask?
Yes.
May I ask a question? Does, how do you feel about that?
I'll do whatever you folks would like me to do.
The suggestion is to come back, present something within the confines of the mayor's budget, just so we can understand?
Sure.
Where would, you know, like the other departments?
Sure. Whatever you ask me to do, I'll do. Whatever you ask me to do, I'll do.
And that feels comfortable to me?
Absolutely.
Councilor?
Would you be prepared to do that by next Thursday?
Absolutely.
Next Thursday's our meeting.
Probably by tomorrow, we're prepared to do it, but, uh, next Thursday?
What are the dates to be, the mayor? We can't, we can't do that. We have to advertise a public hearing and things like that, so this will be a new public?
Keep in mind, uh, next week is graduation and, and senior week, so, but whenever you want, I'll come out on Sunday morning.
Next Thursday is the public hearing on the budget in total, at council. Um?
What are the notes you're passing?
It's for the whole, you can't have?
It's for the whole budget, so you make it count at the meeting, it's, you're doing a public hearing on the entire.
Exactly.
Although graduation.
It's like entire budget.
It's graduation, so?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not good. Um, Council, do you have any thoughts?
To take two votes?
Yeah, sure.
We do, and it's?
You take, you, you keep the hearing open at the next Thursday's meeting for, for the meeting, for, for the budget hearings. I mean, we haven't heard from the, um, regular NPS this year, um, during our budget hearing process, so, I mean, that, that might be something that we could do at the same time.
At the same time?
Can I just?
No, no.
You got to comment. Sure.
And, and that is just to keep in mind that under our new charter system, I mean, the school department has an elected body, the school committee, that makes all the budgetary decisions within the number that the mayor and council give them. That's, that's their role. This council, that's not their role. And it's actually analogous to Smith-Vogue occasional. There's a board of trustees, which are three elected, plus the mayor, and the superintendent of schools, who make all the decisions within the, the line items of that budget that's voted on by the mayor and the city council. So, I, I just wanna, if, if your objective is to get into a line item discussion of how things are being funded, that's fine, but I just wanna, you, I wanna make sure that those boundaries are understood, around the charter and whose responsibility.
I think to the point, to the councilor's point, is that we're actually pretty cognizant and made aware of the NPS, uh, what, what their budget response has been with the budget they've been presented. That is not the case with Smith-Vogue occasional. And I think that, and, and Council Schwartz, you have a question about that?
Well, I guess, I, you know, just having heard, I was certainly clear about the NP, the public school process, à la the school committee. Just hearing the mayor describe the parallel to the Smith-Vogue process with the board of trustees, I, I do, I do question the, our role in the context of the Smith-Vogue budget and this counselor budget role, particularly in view of the, of the politics of the moment. And I, I guess I, I, I question our role in this moment, in the context of this school system, and the, its decision-making process that already exists, parallel to ours.
And I would, I would say that I think, um, in that we're keenly aware of the impacts, and as we're going forward and, and in the middle of a campaign, as you know, for an override possibly, that there's one kind of dark sky spot that we are not able to, we, essentially, what's broken down for us, we don't not know the impact of the prescribed budget from the mayor. We don't know the impact on this one department. We do know the effect that it's gonna have on the NPS, it's gonna, or it's gonna have on police, or it's gonna have on, on the other departments that have made their case. I think for public informational purposes and our responsibility, we should know what those impacts would be.
I think it's clear that it's not impacted.
Just from a practical standpoint, since it is graduation, since we're voting on this next week, and we've, we know it's about a 1%, we're saying it's a little?
We're not voting on it.
We're not voting on it, but we, but that's when the hearing is.
Yeah.
And given that, we, we know that it's gonna be a little under 1%, approximately 1% is the difference between the two budgets. Certainly, if you were to send, I mean, it's, obviously, something's gonna, you have to look at this and say, here are some options of what we might have to cut.
Sure.
I certainly think that could be sent to us in a memo, we could look at, I don't need, and that we could all have that. I'm not sure, because if, if graduation wasn't happening, different story, but for the practicality and shortness of time, you could send us something, we would all read it, we would understand, while they're gonna have to go through some struggles if they don't get this 1% as well.
I have, excuse me. I guess I need to understand our role in this, in that when you say you wanna understand the struggles that they have to go through with the cut, I don't understand, we are not in a position of restoring money.
We're not, but we're?
We're not in a position, the override has no relationship to the Smith-Vogue budget.
Counselor?
It has no relationship. I mean, as, as it's currently proposed.
Except, we, we've also heard from every other department, I think this was with the council president, every other department comes in, has their opportunity to say, in a public setting, this is what we're gonna be looking at. If it's the police department, we're gonna look at these cuts. And I think it's only fair, even though I agree with you on the technical, we're not allowed to restore anything. Don't, don't forget, even the police department, they can come in and say, we're cutting 40 officers, we can't suddenly say, well, we're gonna shift money to the police department. So, really, what they're often making is a public case for their budget, and I think in, in that respect, I think we might wanna just extend to them this, the same thing, saying, look, here's a budget that's been presented to you by the mayor. What are, how are you going to?
So, Council Schwartz, you're?
It's conceptually off, it's not parallel.
Um, if we make appropriations, we should be able to hear, hear from any, from any department we make appropriations to, we should be able to hear from. And we make appropriations to Smith-Vogue and the school, and the NPS.
Can I say something? And I have to say this, and, and I, I respect them here, and, and we've had this conversation before, we have, the both of us inherited a situation that I don't think either one of us are comfortable with, and, and we're trying to figure it out. And, uh, as the superintendent of, of that district, that's my job to support everybody that's there, and they need to know that I support them. And, uh, and I know that the mayor has a different job, and, and, and his job is to run the city, and I get that. And we, we need to meet somewhere in the middle, okay? But this is something that, that we didn't make up. This is something that's been happening, and we walked into, we're trying to figure it out.
Well, as, as we all are mayor, and then? I just don't want to be spoken for. Uh, I was, I, I was comfortable with the situation. I, I, I was not the one who called the state and turned North Hampton into the state, so I was comfortable to continue the situation. So, any, any, uh, to continue the arrangement that we had and that the state had blessed. I did not call the state, I did not notify the state, I did not do that. Uh, and so, I just wanna make that clear on the record.
Council Casey?
It's like, um, that, like everybody, it's like Groundhog, I'm listening to Councilor Schwartz, this is exactly the obstacles and the issues that Mary Ford was trying to overcome. It's like, it's like looking at Mary Ford sitting over there just talking away, it's exactly what she talked about. And, um, being, not being able to overcome any of these obstacles, because there was no place for it, there was no, you didn't have any, uh, I remember the arguments.
Right. Uh, the, the, actually, the motion on the floor is for continuation of the hearing. Mary, uh, assured, uh, said that essentially, this is a, the, the 6 is an advertised meeting, and this is not advertised on the, the agenda, is continuation of this point. So, we are left with, uh, let me, let me propose this. Give, I, I suspect the superintendent has an understanding of the chart that we're asking. If you could forward us a memo, uh, describing, uh, the impact of, of, the, the, the different numbers, the, or the mayor's proposal, if you could presume that as your budget, and reflect to the council in, in a memo, how that would impact your management of your school, then I think, to, I'm sorry, Council Adam?
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay, I mean?
Just, I just have a few questions. I'm, I'm not quite sure why, in addition to the, the public hearing we're having next Thursday?
I know.
Why we couldn't have them, just so that they can make, I appreciate, the memo is a great idea, I just think that they may want to have the opportunity to, to show on, on TV the, the effects of, of, um, statement of the parameters of the mayor's proposed budget, and I just don't know why the, next week's agenda's not out yet.
Well, my concern, I think, Mary's concern, is it's, it's a publicly advertised meeting to, to, to discuss the budget in total, uh, where we, where the public is allowed to participate. At that point, if we are hung up on this one issue, um, and on top of which it doesn't meet, I don't think it meets the MGL advertisement standards, because we have not specified with, with a continuation of a hearing, um, on from Smith-Vogue occasional. This is a separate meeting, this is a hearing, which is not, it's open to the public, but the public's not invited to participate. Budgetary hearing is a completely different creature. So, I, um, and I may be wrong, but I like to err on the side of caution, as far as particularly advertised meetings match general law and the like. And I think, the, the reason I offer the, the request for a memo, I think in some part, it addresses a number of things. It, it cuts out the emotional investment, the discussion point, it actually directs numbers that we can, uh, read and translate as we wish, and allows us to review these things without the, the, uh, the energy in the air, if you will, to speak in North Hampton terms. Um, and so, I think it serves, the purpose of the questions that I'm hearing, is asking, uh, I've heard this, uh, spoken by many councils, with the exception of Council Schwartz, but what, I mean, I think, actually, on this one point, we were interested in knowing what the impacts would be, um, and if you could just lay those out.
Sure.
Uh, and that would, I think, that would go a long way to satisfying, at least this portion of the discussion, and as we all noted, all the other aspects and elements will be continued on, um, and I, and I'm confident, actually, as we get through this. And it will come with, it will come with drama, and it will come with some bad feelings on some level, but I think it also, will also hopefully resolve some of the potential conflicts that we've seen looming, and the ones that we're currently experiencing. So, that, and, and I'd like you all to note, that is our commitment, to see the same resolution that you desire. Not necessarily the same outcome, the same outcome being the, the best possible vocational school, that would be the case. But the fact is, we're all pulling in the same direction, so that's our common ground, I think we're in good shape in that respect. So, if, uh, if you allow me, I, I actually think that, okay? Council Freeman Daniels?
I'm looking at the charter. Um, I think it's, my reading of it is that it's, that we have to state the notice when we will, um, let the budget be op, be inspect, be able to be inspected, and, um, when we're gonna be having a public hearing on the proposed operating budget.
Yeah.
So, I don't see any problem with continuing to discuss the, uh, Smith-Vogue occasional budget at that, on that.
This is continuation of a different meeting. You want us to convene earlier?
No, I, I don't see.
You wanna open it up in the con, reopen the table, or postpone it, and then open it up in the context of that, uh, advertised budget hearing?
Yeah, I don't see why, why you can't, I, it doesn't, my reading of the charter does not include that.
Okay. Well, there's a disagreement there, and if you'll allow me, I'd like to err on the side of caution here, um, and if, if, if something's determined differently, then maybe we can do that. Is it your, is it your pleasure to continue the meeting, or you're not, the memo?
That's my proposal.
I understand, but I'm saying?
But if they, if they can't make it, wanna send, send a memorandum, or if they, they just, if someone does not wanna, if, you know, if they wanna send a representative, I, I don't have any, I, I, I hope that the council would allow a representative from the, from the high school to speak.
Yeah. No, I, I think? Yes. Oh, yeah. Oh, actually, doesn't matter.
The advertisement of the public hearing that's gonna be next Thursday of the full budget had to be legally done?
Yep.
With a legal ad, with plenty of notice, just like a poll petition or any of those, with a certain number of days. You cannot just have another public hearing next Thursday. You don't have the, the timing. You don't have enough timing. I believe the minimum is 10 days.
I see, I see 14 in the charter, but I don't see why we can't discuss the one element of this budget at the budget, at the public hearing.
Okay, well, first of all, at 7:05, you're having a public hearing on the entire budget. You could have a, a room full of people who would clear out and wanna bring in another room full of people who wanna be opponents or proponents. I, I don't understand when you're gonna schedule a hearing for this.
I am, I intend to, I, I hope, I hope that we can, during our, let me, let me rephrase my motion.
Sure.
I hope that during our public hearing next Thursday, that we, um, allow for as much time and discussion on the Smith-Vogue occasional and our agricultural high school as we can.
Uh, that's, that's a proposal I'd, uh, I actually think we need to vote on. Who's on? Um, Council Casey?
And the emphasis on how this will affect the kids, I'm not really that so concerned about admin and all this other, but how will this affect the kids? What will this do in reference to the kids at the school?
Okay.
That's, that's my, my big concern.
All right, that's the charge. Um, possibly also consider, um, I think, an expanded conversation then about, uh, tuition costs, tuition rates that were set for regional, for regional influence. I'd also like to understand, um, the original question that was posed, if, if you're prepared to answer that, about, that's more of a philosophical question about, uh, redundant systems and how it might more effectively improve the lot of, of, uh, Smith-Vogue occasional, if you think it will, if there were some redundancies that are actually involved in some aspect of the community. But that might be more appropriate for the larger conversation. But please consider it. Um, I think we've exhausted this and completed with being exhausted. Uh, I appreciate everyone's participation in conversation here, and I, and I appreciate the goodwill that everyone's expressed here, going forward, that we continue to follow. Uh, thank you so much for returning your testimony, I appreciate it. Councilors, there was actually an opportunity for discussion that's next on the agenda, um, but, uh, here, we discuss out which, which council, well, Council Schwartz?
Can we move to adjourn?
Second?
Can I move to adjourn?
Yes.
Second?
Well, no, no.
Oh, go second?
Excuse me, uh, would you, do you wanna consider another meeting?
Another meeting?
Because there are quite a few departments, I listed them in an email to Council Dwight that he sent to all of you, that were not asked to come to these, because we followed last year's agendas.
Exactly.
As far as who, uh, counselors asked for last year. If you're asking for new departments to come to another budget hearing, I have June 11th or June 12th, those are the only days where there aren't other meetings scheduled that we have, that all of you have to go to different meetings. And then the other thing of it is, is of these departments that were in that list, there's no guarantee they can come, bring some dispatch, because we've only got a chance here at approximately two weeks to ask all these people if they even can arrange to come to something of another meeting.
Personally, I'm not able to attend a conflict, so...
Counsel, say, well, right, Counsel Murphy?
Well, and, and the smaller departments, they, there's not, a lot of those smaller departments, there's not what you can do with them. There's two or three people, I mean, it is what it is, you, there's no change can really be made, because it's two and a half people, and it's all, it's all personnel costs. I mean, that whole other list, there's nothing there that anything can really be done with, sort of putting them out of business.
Well, that other list, it includes the North Hampton Public Schools, just not to put too fine a point on it.
But they're, but they're the only one that I was surprised we didn't see here.
62% of the budget. Counsel Freeman Daniels and Counsel LeBard?
I think if, if the council can manage a quorum, we should have another meeting. I mean, Forbes Library, for instance, has, we've not heard from them, it's a million-dollar budget. So I, I think that, like I said, if we can manage a quorum, then we should hear from these other departments.
Okay, and Counsel LeBard?
I have to disagree with Counsel Murphy about smaller departments. I've seen us have hearings on smaller departments. And sometimes it's really good to have them come in, because you can hear if they are going to have to take an employee and go half-time with that employer now, but just to have them here is very valuable sometimes, to hear about that small department. So I just wanted you to let you know that, Counsel Murphy.
Counsel Casey?
I'd be willing on either one of those dates.
Okay. Your honor, could you have...
I just, I didn't hear the date, so...
June 11th or 12th?
June 11th?
And 12th?
And 12th.
Those are the only two dates that are open where their meeting room hasn't been scheduled
or there isn't another committee meeting of some kind.
It does give, for the, a lot of time, it gives 14 days.
What is that going to be?
All this would be, would be budget hearings, they wouldn't have to be advertised.
Right.
You would have two more days, budget hearings?
One, one of course.
No, I'm just saying those dates are available.
Right. Counsel Schwartz and Counsel Specter have expressed their opinion, whether they want to do that.
I just have regrets, I can't, I can't.
I understand, no, it's fine.
This is great.
You can't check your calendar for these dates?
I'd be happy, I should, I'd try them.
I mean, I'll try to come, I, I can't check because I don't have anything with me.
Why don't we do this?
Okay, so there's two, there's two things to consider here, is can we get the other departments here?
Okay, well, we'll find that out, we'll find that out.
And can you, all of you on a certain day, or most of you on a certain day?
All right, well, let's say we'll get, we're going to shoot for a quorum for the 11th and 12th, what are the departments that want to hear from?
The only one I do want to hear from is schools.
Schools, Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I only can do the 11th.
You want to hear from schools and libraries?
Please.
Anyone else?
I only can do the 11th.
You want schools and Forbes and Lilly?
Forbes.
Counsel LeBard?
Just the 11th.
You can only do the 11th?
Yeah.
All right. Anyone have any, I'm sorry?
Legal?
Legal? Well, legal?
Yeah.
Legal?
Now, does anyone want to invite these people back since we're having another meeting?
Uh...
Because it's not their graduation anymore.
It's not their graduation.
Yeah, why wouldn't, yeah, if you're having another hearing.
Not, not, yeah.
What time would this meeting be on the 11th?
Wait, Hank, what?
Since Counsel, you can only do the 11th, right?
Exactly.
If I can make it, what time would this meeting be on the 11th, if I could choose? What are we talking about?
The five again, five, five.
I might have to come, I'll come at nine while you're still going on.
Okay.
I know your point, if, 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 if the solicitor is the only non-salary employee who wants to send a memo, I guess you're going to have to charge for that too, right? One way or another, whatever's cheaper. Yeah, whatever's cheaper on that one, I agree.
Yeah, because the expenditure, the expenditure you would insist on, I guess, we're forcing to justify as expenditure if it could come before us. I am hearing schools, libraries, memo from legal, anybody, anybody else, going once, going twice.
All this has been put down on the allotment.
I'm sorry?
Arts?
Arts? Special place in town for you.
One and a half, one and a half, perhaps 15 in allotments, I mean, maybe...
The one thing I might suggest is, don't commit to the half hour, tell them all to be here.
Right. If you can beat all at once and then not have to schedule one and a half hours, that undermined.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to hear this. By 05, 5, 5:10, 5:11, and then...
What's the problem?
Actually, we're still convened here, and I like, as, I'm not particularly skilled at this, as we've clearly seen, trying to manage a meeting. But right now, there is a clause on the floor to convene a meeting on the 11th or 12th. Mary will determine which best suits the purposes of the people that we're asking, we're asking...
Can we just note that the mayor and vice director cannot come on the 12th?
No, they don't. No, they don't. The 11th will shoot for...
It's my 20th wedding anniversary.
Oh, you've got your priorities completely skewed. All right, that's, because you got the, and the list I have now, I almost hesitate in saying it, because every time I say it, one gets added on. He says, looking at the LDM, the, we have schools, libraries, memo from legal, and arts.